It is 7:06 PM on Monday, June 10th, 2019, and this is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. And I do not have, we do have microphones. In attendance this evening, we have board members Paula Cole, Peter Tensing, John Ashmead, Tim Polis, and Christine Malik. We also have Superintendent Yunowski next to me at the table. Our student board members for the year, Nasir Folsen and Diego Luis Nikio, celebrated their graduation on Friday. It was wonderful to celebrate with them and all of their classmates and loved ones who were at the ceremony. So, we just want to appreciate them for their work over the year. We will strive to remain focused on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel as we conduct our meeting this evening." And I also just wanted to take a moment before we review the agenda to welcome everybody who is with us tonight. This is a wonderfully sized crowd. We appreciate that you are spending at least part of your evening with us. There are printed agenda copies out there on the table. If you did not, grab one of those. And the full board packet, which you will see on the screen, but sometimes it's hard to read, is available on our website if you would like to follow along there. It's about us, then school board, then school board meeting schedule. Okay, all of that context. Our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I will move the agenda as presented.
I will second.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Tensing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes, sorry, the chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. Moving into the information and proposals, non-action items section of the agenda. As this is our one meeting of the month for June, we will begin with time for public comment. We have two requests for public comment this evening. Before our first comment, which will be Kyle, I want to provide a brief overview of our guidelines. As outlined in Board Policy 216, we welcome comments from members of the public. We ask that you ensure your comments are consistent with our policy, especially around protecting the privacy rights of individual students and staff members. Members of the public have three minutes to speak, unless translation is required, in which case six minutes are provided. Mary, our board secretary, will indicate when your time is drawing to a close, which means she's probably going to walk around and do that, since otherwise you can't see her, given that the microphone for public comment is right there in the middle of this table in front of us. Thank you in advance for sharing your thoughts with us. And know that even though we will not be responding in the moment to this evening, that we will take your comments seriously. And you may receive follow-up from us or from a member of the staff. That being said, Kyle.
All right, well, I'm Kyle Metcalf. I'm a parent of two kids in the district. I'm a high school coach, a youth coach. I'm also RHS alumni and a board member of youth sports. I'm talking about the branding committee and mostly the use of, or talking about the R. Baseball has had the R that I'm wearing for about 30 years. And it's standing the test of time as it hasn't changed. It's not trendy, but it will never go out of style. It's unique on its own. You not see it anywhere else around the state. It's recognizable in our community. Many know what it is and what it stands for. It also gets recognized outside of Richfield as people tend to know where we are from based on it. Other sports right now are currently starting to use the same R. Football has started using it, Alpine. Boys basketball, wrestling, softball are also using this R as well as summer strength. Last year, the prior branding committee polled all the 2017, 2018, eighth through 11th graders with two different Rs, one that is this R and one that was more modern. Eighty-two percent of the students said they liked this R. I think that speaks quite a bit. Our coaches who will wear, athletes who will wear this mostly will be the ones that go into the public, into the community wearing this R and have expressed that many do not like the R that is being presented as they're starting to see it. Along with high school, some of our youth organizations are using it as well. Richfield Baseball Travel, baseball is now wearing a version of the high school hat that has this R on it. This was done to build a link between the high school team, along with the high school and our youth, to try and build more pride in our community and our school district as well. Kids are wearing them probably everywhere and you can start to see this R more around town as well. Two community groups have even chosen this R. Young Life and Our Town have both decided to use this R because of the ties that it has. I've also been told that alumni group will be formed to look at branding and I would be contacted. Unfortunately, this hasn't happened. But less than two weeks ago, I was told that they wanted to finalize it today and just would like to know how that, how I should interpret that. We have also, we have already started a brand and an identity that is highly recognized and continues to grow with this R that we have. I spoke to a vendor about the custom R that we've been seeing and they have told us that, one that we use quite a bit, that we'd incur additional costs, longer turnaround times. And she wonders the placing and how that will take. One of our community pillars talks about our strong community. But a large portion of the community is telling me that they don't like this new R. They don't think it is unique like the other one. We've seen the two Rs and the first one really didn't seem to look very nice and most really disliked it. And seeing the new one, I know this topic may, or think, many think this topic isn't a big issue, but I believe the pillar that we have is a strong community and our community is passionate about our schools, our community, and how we identify with it. And many identify with it with this R.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
And Mia Simpson is up next.
Hi, everybody. So, I was here for the city school board working session. And I have to tell you how thrilled I was to hear about the topics that were brought up. So, I'm here to talk about environmental sustainability issues in the schools. And I wanted to start with a thank you to Peter and Crystal and Ben and Mary and Maria for talking about this as a collaboration opportunity. We're really excited about it. So, I'm a member of the Richfield Social Justice Community and also a member of the Organics Task Force and have been focused largely on environmental issues, looking for opportunities to help Richfield have more sustainable practices and supporting local structures to do that. So, as part of Mayor Reagan Gonzalez's community conversation last December, we identified collaboration with schools and environmental issues as a keen interest for community members. There were about 10 to 15 people who attended that. And from that effort, Jennifer Lewis and I, as well as Amy Paget and others, have been looking for opportunities to connect with students, the school board, and the city. And realized we didn't know much about what's happening within the school district overall on behalf of environmental issues, including programming, curriculum, school groups, infrastructure, capital projects. I was thrilled to hear that there is an environmental group and we'll look forward to connecting with them. And we would love to see an audit or inventory to help us understand where we can partner, what we can celebrate and promote, and where gaps may exist that could serve as opportunities. So, we'll appreciate your support in helping kind of build that understanding and look forward to collaborating with you there. Secondly, we'd like to see student participation in some existing initiatives. I feel like as part of the working session, we covered mainly all of these topics, but this is to really reiterate that these things matter to us. So, thank you for hitting all the key highlights. We have the Organics Task Force and we'll be bringing an item on the agenda on Wednesday to talk about this, potentially pulling in student groups or having Rachel speak to your team, your board, excuse me. And we hope to see a sustainability commission started with a goal of 2020 starts. We'll be talking to Maria Moore about, you know, how we can build some momentum in that space to get that sustainability commission started. And we think we could, you know, include student participation either as a member or as part of group collaboration. I'm a member of the Richfield Arts Commission. I'm a co-chair of that group. And we do have student members as part of that commission. So, we see that as a ripe opportunity. And, you know, I just want to say this takes a village. I've got 30 seconds to go. So, thank you for your time. Thanks for your energy in this. And we will look forward to seeing more opportunity here. Thank you.
Thank you to both of our, both members of our community that spoke. The next opportunity for public comment will be at our board meeting on Monday, July 15th, which will be taking place back at our traditional location in the district office on Harriet Avenue. I now need to recognize our high school graduates. Student board members Diego Luis Nikio and Nasir Folsen, who are still here with us, even though you walked the stage on Friday. As you can tell, we're all thrilled to see you both. Thank you so much for being here.
It took us 16 minutes to find where this room was.
You're here.
Yeah, we're here.
That's good.
I also wanted, and I have this in my notes, to check and make sure that there wasn't somebody who arrived late and who didn't want to make public comment because of the meeting change. I didn't see that, but can anybody just, okay. Just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that this is not our usual location. So, we will now move on to the superintendent update, which contains several items this evening, including one of which that was addressed in public comment. As an introduction to this section of the agenda, we will not be taking action on any of these items this evening, but instead, we'll be receiving reports from staff. And this is the opportunity for board members to ask questions and share thoughts on these items that may come before us as action items in the future. So, I will turn it over to Superintendent Yunowski.
All right, so I am inviting, behind me, so that's a slightly awkward setup, Craig Colgie, our director, our chief operation officer, and our partners from C E L to give us a process update and talk about where we are in terms of branding, marketing, and working to create that solid communications-based brand where we have a very clear, this is who we are as Richfield Public Schools, and then also very clear visuals that align to that work. And so, they're here today to talk about where we are in that process and give that process update. Craig.
Very good, thank you. And it is odd standing behind half of the board here, so I appreciate having the opportunity to direct you. Really, we started this work a few years ago when we looked at our enrollment and making sure that we're serving our broad Richfield community, making sure that we're engaging parents who are making choices for their schools, making choices for their kids and where they're going to go to school and the opportunities around that. And really, as we were doing that, we found that there were a lot of opportunities where people were saying, if only people knew what was really happening in the schools. If only people really saw the connections that teachers were making with kids. If only people saw the experiences that my kids had, then we'd have something that would be a great opportunity for our community and we'd be engaged in a much broader audience. And so, our work really started in that path and fiscal plan advisory committee said, we need to do a better job of telling our story. And so, as we started that process, this really is what the branding component is about. It's about telling our story. It's about making sure that we know where our community is at, what expectations they have for the schools, and then making sure that we as a board and we as a school district are meeting the needs of those kids and those families so that when we look at Richfield and our Richfield community and our Richfield schools, that that's the engagement that we have. And so, the foundation of this really is the messaging. I've kind of been referring to it as the brand promises. What are the things that we as a school district want to promise our parents and want to promise our broader community about what the experiences are? And then making sure that we have visual elements and everything that people hear and everything that people see echoes and reinforces that perspective. And that's really the component of the brand message work that we have here today. And through this process, we engaged C E L, who's done this work with other school districts and outside organizations, to help facilitate that process for us in Richfield. And one of the reasons why we chose C E L is because that stakeholder involvement and commitment was such a foundation of the work that C E L had done in other school districts. And it wasn't just, let's go back behind the scenes as administration and just make this up, but let's engage individuals. And you'll find out just what are the levels of opportunities that people have been engaged in as we work through this process. Being a part of this process, it's been exciting because you do start to hear the stories. You do start to hear what it is that's connecting with our parents, what it is that's connected with our community, and then also what the community that we're not engaging with, what their expectations are, and making sure that we're meeting those needs. And the board has done a great job of gathering information through surveys over the last few years and really kind of reaching out to gather that perspective. And our goal really is to align all of those perspectives into one place and bring this forward. And we're continuing that journey here tonight. So, there isn't a final decision being made tonight, but we're continuing that process and continuing that path. But wanted to come back to the board and share what we've learned, what we've discovered as far as what people are hearing and saying about the organization, and then the status of how we are moving forward in representing the Richfield schools, and then where yet we're taking next steps. So, the process really is kind of laid out. And if you've been a part of one of these stakeholder groups that's been involved in this, you've heard this already. But the first stage is really the discovery stage. What is it that people are saying about Richfield schools? What is it that are the programs that we're offering in Richfield schools? What are the opportunities that Richfield schools provides? The board had done surveys over the last, I think, three to five years just on an annual basis of our parents, of our students, and our staff. Last spring, we actually engaged the services of a broader survey to serve 250 parents who choose Richfield schools, 250 parents who choose to open their, open enroll their kids to other school districts, and 250 parents who are choosing charter schools. And our goal really was to kind of understand, what are people seeing, hearing, and thinking about the school district? Those were phone surveys that were conducted in person or conducted by somebody on the phone in a direct conversation. It wasn't a Survey Monkey, it wasn't just a Google search, but it was an in-depth conversation that individuals were having to gather information. And what we found is that there are a lot of things that people were perceiving aren't available in Richfield schools that we know that we have here. A lot of things that people really appreciated about Richfield schools, who are in their experiences and engaged in that work as well. And at the same time, we found out that there weren't a lot of people out there telling the stories of what their experiences are. And so, one of the things that this branding work seeks to do is align those messages so we know what we're about as an organization. The board knows what promises we're making to the community. Our staff hears that and is reinforcing that area. And then also, people are able to echo those stories outside because all of a sudden, something connects with their experience and they know that that's what the Richfield schools are striving for. And it's an opportunity to reinforce that. And it's also an opportunity for us to hold ourselves accountable so we can have some conversations about where we are meeting those needs, where we're not, and to kind of bring that back and reinforce it. So, that discovery was all of those surveys and data collection, some stakeholder groups looking at what are the things that are going on in the school district. And then from that was the positioning. What are those brand messages or brand promises that really resound around what Richfield schools are? And we started out this process about three months ago and we tweaked it all along the process. We've had some major changes to it. We've added, we've deleted different messages. And so, there's the brand positioning as far as what are those messages? What are those brand promises that really are about Richfield schools? And that is the heart of what the brand messaging is because we're talking about the communication. We're talking about those components of it. That third stage is the brand identity. And this is where we seek to try to represent those brand promises or key messages in visual representation. Of what is a Richfield school district logo? When people see it, what are they going to think about? And how does that reinforce those positions? Is really kind of the component that ties in with that. This also is something that, as we've gone through the process, has had many changes, tweaks, adjustments, major overhauls and things like that. And we are still continuing that process after tonight to engage in some different perspectives and different options. Feedback is that fourth key area. And so, once that brand identity was identified, what did people think of when they saw that? What did people think of when they were hearing those key messages? And so, there were stakeholder groups that were held, feedback opportunities for individuals. We engaged P T Os, we engaged the extracurricular advisory committee, we engaged a group of boosters and we, and coaches. We engaged the city staff and city council, representatives of Richfield engaged in that process, the Richfield Latino Family Association, staff and teachers that were also involved in the process. So, really a broad scale of who we are serving across the organization, trying to get different perspectives. What we found is that everybody likes something, but seldom do people all like the same thing. And that's one of the challenges of this work, of kind of engaging in that process. And I'm looking to see if we all have different preferences, what at least represents kind of the imagery that excites people, that people understand what's motivated and how that organization lines up. We're working towards brand completion. We think we have some elements of this that are very strong and have very strong feedback as part of that process. We have a couple elements that we are continuing to monitor and adjust. And we're hoping to bring this back in July for some more recommendations to the board, gathering some additional feedback in the timeline and in that process with the goal of being able to start to implement this as soon as this fall and the start of school. Our new year is the start of school year and so, we're working to have as much of this ready as we can to be rolling out with that area. But at the same time, we're going to make sure we do this right and that we do it well and that it's aligned with some strong perspective and support for how we got to where we are. So, that's the process that we've been working through. Just to show that level of community engagement. And we as a district are very committed to the work that we're doing through surveys, through other opportunities, and through this process. So, as part of this community engagement, there have been 16 meetings with community groups that have been held as part of this process. Two live webinars that were actually held to help make sure that we're getting additional information out. 257 participants at various meetings that all were able to share and provide different information, different perspectives about this work. We rolled out an online feedback survey. There were 119 responses to that online survey. 122 people viewed, or there were recorded webinar views of that, those live webinars that were held. And then 112 paper feedback forms that were received from the various schools. So, one of the things that we had done is engaged, put out boards for each one of our schools that parents and our staff had the chance to kind of respond to and give some feedback as part of that process. So, we've worked hard to get a lot of different perspectives. One of the things that was kind of interesting is we started to look at the surveys and started to look at the paper forms. A lot of the information that came out of those forms really were represented in the stakeholder groups. Things that people liked, things that people's preferences were, messages that resounded with people, questions about messages, was really relatively consistent as part of that process. And so, that really kind of provided support or faith in me of kind of the work that I've been engaged through that process and knowing that there were a lot of different components tied in with that. So, to that commitment of community engagement and the Richfield community, that's the work that was done as part of this process to date. And again, we continue to engage in this work moving forward as well. So, when we turn to that, those brand messages or brand promises, this has gone through a number of different reiterations. And just to kind of highlight the messages and the stories that were heard as part of this process, the tagline, we're calling it, is that enriching and accelerating learning. One of the things that this started with was it started with accelerating learning or accelerating student learning. And one of the conversations is, we're not all about speed. We're about doing it well and making sure that we're providing kids the opportunity of connecting with everything and meeting the needs with where they're at. And accelerating really has a lot of different tones to it. And we have some work to do in telling that story of what does accelerating mean because it's not just about how fast can we push so that students can achieve well on standardized tests. It's making sure that we're getting kids and moving them to where they need to be to be at grade level or above. It means that we're providing opportunities for college in the schools so students who are graduating from high school can actually be graduating with college credits. So, you're not just finishing, you're not just getting with 12th grade, but you're moving on to that next level. And really, what that means for us is it means connecting with kids where they're at and accelerating them so that they can achieve their dreams, so that they can achieve their hopes. And encourage, and I'd say the other piece, to capitalize on their curiosity so that they're really taken to that next level. And so, that's where we felt like accelerating wasn't complete and we needed to also include enriching as part of that process. The great thing about enriching is it's got Rich field right in the word. And so, that's something that's really connected with us. But it really does tell that story is it's not just about speed, but it's about the depth and the breadth of the work so that it goes kind of broad, wide, and deep in all different categories associated with that. So, the enriching and accelerating learning, what's interesting is when we looked at surveys, some people really like enriching, some people really like accelerating. And so, it is one where we've kind of blended both of those in there because neither one really tell, seemed to tell the complete story. So, that's that part of the process. And then really, there are these four brand messages or brand components that really are identifying Richfield and are things that C E L identified from their experiences looking at different schools. What are they doing, what are we doing? That really resounded about the Richfield schools and the Richfield schools community. And there I slipped up and led that first one in about community. The first brand promise really is real community. And that's a part of it is real, it is authentic. It is we are here supporting each other and we're connecting and we're making that engagement. And so, it's that caring community. But there's also a lot of pride of the diversity of the community and making sure that we're reinforcing that that diversity is a part of who we are. And we come together with different perspectives, different beliefs, different cultures, different backgrounds. But in the schools, we are all one and we all want to connect as one. And then that component about relationships. So, having been in the district since 1992 in different capacities, I've heard over and over, the R in Richfield stands for relationships. It is a small town. It is a community that's involved in that part. It's the relationship that kids have with students. It's the relationship that our community has with the school district. It is ways that outside organizations are coming into the Richfield schools and helping support our kids on our common goal and mission. So, that real community that's authentic, that is meaningful, caring community, rich diversity, and real relationships was one of the things that really resounded at the top. And so, we actually placed it at that first level of the thing that, one of the things that really distinguishes Richfield schools. Second category is personalized learning. Rigorous, relevant, and engaged learning for each student. Originally, we had this in, then it came out, and then we ended up putting it back in because we lost that individualized attention. When, it's, it's, it's one of those things that a lot of school districts will say, we have personalized learning. There probably aren't a lot of schools that aren't telling some version of personalized learning. We tried it without because we didn't want to be redundant with other organizations, but then it missed. And it was a place that we could talk about that rigorous curriculum that we're providing for each student. That's providing supports and enhancements and enrichments for them, meeting the needs of kids where they're at and challenging them at the level to really exceed to higher levels. Relevant, keeping it real for kids, keeping it real for our community, and then engaged learning for each student. That each student is a way for us to bring in that individual attention on each student. It's not a group of students. It's not a classroom, but it is the opportunity for each student to have that learning experience that's rigorous and relevant for them. The rich opportunities, another great way for us to connect with rich. But one of the things that we keep hearing about Richfield schools is there is an opportunity, or there, one of the perceptions of Richfield schools, I should say, is that we don't offer the same opportunities that other school districts do. That you can't be involved in as many athletic opportunities, that we don't have as many R experiences, that we don't have the same academic opportunities as other school districts. We have more college in the schools classes offered at our high school than any other school in the metro area. That's one of those things that surprises people when we tell that story. We have a dual-language school that offers classes and more than one class that's not just your Spanish college in the schools class that enhances and supports the dual-language program through two different classes all the way through high school. So, it's a deeper level of our dual-language program. It's engaging that work. And so, it's that connection of academics as well as the arts, athletics, music. And there's the opportunity to be involved in so many things and encouraging kids into those activities was one of the deep connections there. And then the last one here really shows up as that innovation in action. And this is where C E L kind of gave us a baseline and gave us a sense of where we're really at compared to where we think we are. C E L came in and when they started hearing these stories and the different ways that we're supporting kids and the different ways that we're changing our teaching styles and our involvement in innocent classroom and our involvement in improving our instruction, they started saying, you guys are really doing a lot. And so, it started with innovation, innovative thinking. And it was some of the administrative team that said, but we're not just thinking about this, we're doing it. team that said, but we're not just thinking about this, we're doing it. And that's one of the really cool experiences that we have. I used to work in a larger school district and the story was, we're not a speedboat, we're a cruise ship. And so everything takes a very slow path to turn. Well, compared to that large school district, Richfield schools may not be a speedboat that is cruising through with big sharp turns, but we're able to mobilize a lot quicker and respond to improvement efforts at a higher level than a lot of other school districts can. And so that innovation in action, transforming how we teach and redefining schools. Earlier, actually just last week, we had changing how we teach. And that's one of the things that didn't really resound for people, is that good or is that bad? And so we're trying to kind of bring that positive component to it and we're transforming how we teach. We're not happy just sitting and lecturing in front of a classroom, but we're wanting to find different ways of connecting with kids and redefining schools. And the other thing we all know is that we're going through some major building renovations that are providing opportunities for different educational environments that are really connecting in with the classrooms and the opportunity for our teachers and our staff within the buildings to connect with kids in different ways and provide opportunities for that. And so that redefining school is not just a learning environment or the facility, but it's redefining how we do our work. Other areas that really shows that we're redefining is we're engaging, so we've activated around social emotional learning at a high level, providing supports in each one of our buildings. We have a Richfield Health Youth Resource Center in our high school that's connecting with kids in different ways. So we're serving kids in different ways beyond just the classroom and making sure that all of our kids that are in our schools have opportunities. And I have an aversion to the word opportunity because, well, you have an opportunity to do it, but really we're putting it in so that they can have access to that work and are encouraged and supported to kind of take that next level, take that next step and meet the needs of the kids where they're, where they're at. So these really are the brand messages or brand promises that have emerged that really seem to differentiate Richfield schools, both on what we want to be, but working with CEEL and some of the things we're hearing from other community members are things that we're doing at a level that we maybe take for granted because we've been doing this work for so long, but are different than how other school districts are responding. And so there are things that we want to put out there and brag about and also hold ourselves accountable so we continue to reinforce in those areas. So we talked about relationships, we talked about transforming, we talked about that inspiring possibilities and wanting to make sure we maintain that connection around inspiration that's in some of our current language and current work of part of what we need to do is connect with kids in an inspiring way, engaging in those opportunities. So those are the brand messages that have kind of come into play as part of that process. And again, I want to reinforce that this is the foundational work that really sets the rest of the work forward, but then also provides opportunities for us to start to tell these stories outside in the community through the communications that we have, but also giving parents the tools and resources to be communicating about this work as well. So this is our current Richfield district logo that has been used probably for about the last nine years. This is one that you'll see on our website and it's on the banners in the front of each one of the board tables and stuff like that. But it really kind of represents a lot of different things. And one of the questions that kind of emerges is, does that tell that story of the real community, the personalized learning, the rich opportunities and the innovation in action? And one of the things that, I think it was at the athletic boosters and coaches group, they said, one of our teachers who's also a coach said, that's basically something trying to put everything on a plate, put it in one place and hope that it connects with somebody in some way because there's a lot of different stuff in there. And what we've seen is there's a lot of transition and a lot of design work both in schools and colleges as well as in businesses to streamline communication. So it's simpler imagery, simpler messages that really connect in different ways. And so there's a foundation in that area. At the same time as looking at how we do things differently on a visual representation, we really strove, have been striving to make sure we're honoring the tradition that is Richfield schools and connect with some of the elements from our alumni and our past experiences because we know that Richfield community is a deep community and there are a lot of people that are committed to the work that we're doing. But at the same time, making sure that we're also looking at how we're responding to what parents are wanting when they're choosing schools and what is the impression that they have based on some of the things they maybe start to see. And so it's connecting in different ways. So this is what emerged as the most recent draft of the Richfield schools logo. You can see it's an R and there's an effort to really focus on Richfield community as our connection point where other school districts may have taken open books, may have taken fountains, may have taken crests of something. One of the things that I think CEEL identified is the Richfield city really is the Richfield schools and the Richfield community. And so having an R in that, in that logo that's district wide was something that seemed to be an important component of it. But then it also strove to take a look at, okay, so how can we show some of that contemporary look, some of the more innovation that we're talking about and the forward thinking and the action orientation in that R? And so try to bring some of the contemporary components of it. This is actually the third version of an R that was developed by CEEL and we're not there yet. I'll tell you a little bit more about kind of the information we got on the survey. We're not there yet as part of that process. These people generally said this is a lot better than the second R or the previous one that they saw. And so they're definitely feeling like some of their messages are being heard. Some of the efforts around this tried to align with something that could transfer also into an athletic logo of some sort and be used in that area was a little bit more collegiate, but had a little bit more of a future thinking component to it. You can see the tagline is included in that with the enriching and accelerating learning. And then at the bottom, you can see Richfield High School, Richfield Sheridan Hills Elementary. So one of the things we're really working to do is align all of our schools with one clean image logo that's connected, but also can be used for the schools. That's something that we heard over and over is we want people to know if they go to Sheridan Hills, it's a Richfield School District school. If they go to Richfield Dual Language School, it is a Richfield School District logo. And so being able to have that brand across the elementary schools as well as the middle school, as well as the high school was one of the key foundation pieces. One of the challenges honestly is something that resonates at elementary school doesn't always resonate at the high school level. And so trying to blend those with something that's more collegiate, but also has some of that innovation and future looking that's a little bit more simple for elementary schools was connected in there. With the most recent online survey as well as the paper surveys that were completed, what we found is there's 50% of those who responded that really like this, like exclamation points, great idea, I love the future thinking, I love the components of it. But we also have 50% that don't like it. And so trying to find that blend of what is it that people like that they're passionate about? The 50% that don't like it, there are about 10 to 12% that really like what they have, really like that previous Richfield logo or really like what they visualize for a Richfield R. And then there were a lot of people that didn't like it because they said, it's just not distinguished enough. It isn't different enough. And so we've asked CEEL to go back to the drawing board and continue this work and continue the refinement around what this would look like, trying to blend those components of what people really like with the hopes that we can bring the community together and make it something that's more different, more distinguished, so people identify it when they see it. But it also shows that contemporary component as well. So that's the work that we're looking forward to continuing in this path and we're hoping to engage in that work over the next month. So we can come back in July with some additional information that way. This shows kind of how some of that comes to action in different ways. In the upper left-hand corner, you see that we have Sheridan Hills Elementary Schools. So one of the things we're doing is we're keeping each one of the mascots that the elementary schools has so that they can connect in a different way and creating some visuals that connect that way, but still using the Richfield, Richfield R with the diamond in it as well as the Richfield Sheridan Hills community. One of the things that we heard was the Spartan head in that lower left-hand corner is great for middle school and high school, but it's a little scary for elementary kids. So creating little elementary fighters, warriors, although we like the idea of raising little Spartans to be big Spartans, didn't resonate with our elementary parents at that same level. And so we're allowing to create that identity as well as connecting with our Richfield schools in a broader way. I want to also point out the diamond because this is another area where it is an attempt to try to connect with our Richfield traditions and the Richfield community. So the Richfield diamond, people have asked, what's up with the diamond? So if you know the current Spartan head, the Richfield Spartan has five diamonds in the crest of the helmet. So it's bringing that piece. And then we started to go, well, where did the diamonds come from? Why do they put diamonds in that crest of the helmet? Well, the original Richfield High School had a series of red, white and black diamonds across the awning of the main entry in 1953. And it seems like that's one of those traditional components that has emerged over time through that Spartan logo and Spartan head that resonates in some way. It does also provide us an opportunity to talk about the four different brand messages and each one of those components being a brand messaging connection that way. So that's another component of that diamond and showing the richness. And then also the fact of the diamond around the R being a part of the Richfield community. So we have the students in Richfield that are surrounded by our Richfield community that are engaged with those four brand messages and brand promises that are all resonating that way. Early on in the process, a red that was identified as an option aligned with the City of Richfield red, we heard pretty loud and clear people like their dark cardinal red. And so within the schools, trying to make sure that we identify a cardinal red that can blend with the City of Richfield, but also is our true Richfield tradition cardinal red of what people's perspective, perceptions are, is connected in that way. So we brought that back from that brighter red into that cardinal red that lines up with the choices of what individuals are choosing for Richfield schools in those areas as well. So those are just some of the different pieces that have kind of come into play with this and the colors. You can see that Spartan head in the lower left-hand corner. This is something that we thought was going to be one of the biggest challenges at this, at the, at the beginning of this process of moving away from the Richfield Spartan. This has very strong support across all of our groups, a lot of excitement and a lot of engagement with it. Some people see there's the lightning bolt that's kind of in that area, but it's also representing the Spartan cape, really trying to show the action and innovation, emotion that's connected in back with those brand promises as part of that piece. And then just different ways that that can be applied either with the Richfield R with the diamond, with the Richfield logo. And then one last piece and you can't really see it here, but the Richfield font on that currently is a similar font that's custom drawn and custom created that lines up with that Richfield R. So that Richfield R is something that is unique, that's customized, that's not something that you can find in another area. And so making sure that we have something that's unique as an identity. One of the things that some of my colleagues in other school districts have found is there are now colleges that are going out there to protect their brand and protect their trademark. And so having something that's unique is something that has been of value. One of the things that we've seen and we've, we've had the conversations of is it more expensive to get this set up or to use it on different areas? Once you're past the initial setup, what we're finding is any of those customized opportunities really are pretty turnkey. So if we're identifying individuals who do a lot of that work, they're able to customize that and only have one setup charge that's connected with it as part of that process. So it is some of the stuff that we've been taking a look at to make sure it's aligned. So I've had some conversations with some of the providers as well. Some of it gets to be with what are the opportunities that people have to customize it themselves? So one of the things that we've heard is there's an interest in having things that are very consistent as much as possible. And so working on what that brand messaging is as far as if people are using the Richfield R and the Richfield logos, where do they have flexibility, where do they not, so that we can have some areas in those connections as well. So that's some of the work and you can see where it shows up in different areas. As far as next steps, you may have kind of picked up from this work. The next thing that we're doing is going back and continuing to rework the R logo, looking to CEEL to try to find ways to blend the different interests that are tied in with it. And one of the ways that we, because we're now out of school, we're looking at engaging a representative stakeholder group of the various perspectives that have been involved in the process to kind of come together with different perspectives so that we have the athletic organizations represented as well as elementary parents, as well as our Richfield Latino Family Association. So engaging multiple perspectives in the network to try to come with something that blends together. Third thing then is to bring that brand package back to the July meeting, hoping for some approval as part of that process and an opportunity to respond to any questions that come through that process. And then once we have consensus on where we're moving forward with our Richfield logos and the Spartan and the different connections, then we're able to start to build out a very strong brand style guide. On here exactly the color choices that we're using, here's exactly the uniform colors that you would order if you order from different vendors. If you're choosing the logo, these are the sizes that you can use. If you're choosing the logo, this is where you can use it. You can put it with these different traditional lettering styles or regular fonts, or these are the things that you would have to use together in different ways. And we have a lot of choices on how much flexibility we provide to individuals who are using that Richfield logo. Our goal really is to make it as available and accessible to as many people within the Richfield community that want to use it, while at the same time making sure that we have some brand integrity connected with that as well. Toolkits and then also a rollout plan as far as how do we then start to communicate this to the broader community? How do we make sure that we're lining up all of our messages and our communications with those brand messages and brand promises so that we have that consistent communication? Really, people really get to discover what Richfield schools are and see that across us as an organization. So with that, that is the last that I have. If there's feedback, we certainly love questions or comments and things that we can kind of continue working on as part of this process.
Thank you, Craig. That was obviously a lot of information and I'm sure that there are a lot of questions and thoughts from the board, so we will open it up. I also know that you, I'm looking at you, Mr. Paulus, are going to need to leave in a bit. So I want to acknowledge that you need to leave.
Oh, no, I can say as late as necessary. To a point. Anyway, I'll jump in then, I guess. Yeah, Craig, you and I talked before when I was at one of the webinars or, and I completely agree with the premise that we need to have consistent imagery. We want, we need to wrap our arms around that and that historically that hasn't been the case. There have been a million different Rs in use and how they've, you know, how they've gotten to be that way is just, just through, through lack of effort and attention on maintaining it. So there's that. But I, I still, the, the person, I, you know, it's funny, you've, you've said a few times that, that you've heard from vendors that there's only setup cost one time and I've been told that's absolutely not true. Because as people change size, they change where they position it, do they want it arched? Do they want it flat? All the embroidering and everything else takes more time and costs more. And so we don't do anything without getting cost questions from the community about it, right? We say, we want to do this. So when we present this to people and say, do you like it? Have we suggested that it might be higher cost? Because I don't think we have. And so if we've done that and they say it's fine or they like it and it actually is higher cost, I don't think they're making that the like it, don't like it decision on, on the footing that we would want. So there's that. You know, I mean, other things like, like the consistency of it, if it is in fact more expensive, and I'm not thinking of like, like 500 t-shirts, but if you're a team that is smaller that's buying 30 hooded sweatshirts, you're not going to get some, you know, there's going to be turnaround time. You know, the, the big vendors aren't, aren't going to be excited for a 30-shirt order, right? And so it, when you spread these, start set up costs across only 30 units, it's higher per unit. So I, so I have that as a concern with, with the custom font. And when we talk about it as a trademark, as an asset, that is something we, we want to protect, then we've, we've engineered it to be difficult for vendors to use or people to use, you know, if we narrow the list of vendors we can use, we might have extra time to wait. All because of the, the contrivance of a custom font that's hard to, that might be harder to replicate. And so that, that gives me significant pause for how it, how it works when teams get together and organize and decide this is what they want for their apparel. And the students' families decide this is what they want. If there's a delay in that, it's, it's meaningful to them if there's a delay because these people have a setup cost already and they happen to be out of cardinal, which is a harder color than average, right? So I do have that as, as a real concern. You'd mentioned consistency in the stylebook, which I definitely believe in. If we are allowing outside groups and we aspire to have outside groups using this, we will lose that control. And, and, and so even, even with, so I worry more about what happens inside the walls as opposed to outside the walls. And inside the walls, we don't have a good history of controlling it anyway. And so when things get hard, whether it's cost or, or vendor troubles, well-intending people make decisions like, well, this is close enough. And then we've lost the, the whole brand integrity. So again, it, it keeps coming back to because some of the challenges, if we make it hard with a complicated font and drawn, you know, and, and custom to us, I, I still don't see, I would see it as an asset. I see it as a burden to carry for however long we want to carry it until it's made easy. And I don't see when it will be made easy. So, so I do have all that. And then ultimately, when it comes to cost, who is, who at the district office will be charged with enforcing the brand stylebook? And, and, you know, do we have an idea of how that will be administered? Because that will take more time than what we've expended in the past, which is none. I mean, to be fair, right? So, so that time does come at a cost if it is, if it is a trademark font that we have as a trademark as an asset, then we should work to protect that asset and that will be harder to do than if we use a classic public domain font. So, you know, but I'd have to know what happens when, when, when there are violations of the stylebook, right? Again, with groups inside the walls, I, you know, I guess if there, if there's a third party or a community group that wants to use our thing and they use it in ways we don't like, so in violation of the agreement we've given them, what are we going to do? We're going to send them, send them a C syndicist and confiscate the contraband and, I mean, I just don't see that happening. So again, if we're not going to enforce it vigilantly, and I don't think we can, I don't know why we would set it up as this is the way to go personally. So, you know, long story short, I just, I just don't see the appeal or advantages of a trademark font. I think there are readily, readily acceptable traditional fonts that, that the community will support. And then I think some of the support for this font is, is based on the assumption that it's just as easy to replicate in every setting as a more, as some of the more traditional ones. And I don't think that's the case. So it's just, it's just, I just don't see it. So that's my two cents.
Can I follow up on some of the things that Tim was sharing? Because I do think, going back to one of those first slides, that was sort of like the circle in terms of the order in which these things happen and implementation is the last one. I also want more information about implementation and implications about that. And I think- And I think getting actual details about costing and being able to see that feels really important before we make, before we make any decisions, because I am thinking about it for our P T Os, for example, for our athletic organizations. And, you know, I think we've seen a lot of helpful examples of corporations and universities going through rebranding efforts, and they just have different resources than we do. And so I think it would be very helpful when we come back and talk about this again in July to be able to have some concrete financials that address a number of the things that Tim is talking about. And then I think just the broader thing I was going to share is in a conversation that I had with C E L, you know, we talked about this should be unifying, right? We want this to be a unifying brand, and I think we're closer to unifying on some aspects of this than others. It seems like the messaging we're much closer on, but then, you know, as Craig was sharing with the R, we're 50/50. That is not unifying. We're never going to be unanimous. But I am glad to hear that we are continuing to work on that so that when we do get to the point where we're ready to take action, we can have more confidence that this will actually be a unifying experience for the district and community. And then the one other thing I was going to say is I hope that Diego, Luis, and Nissir finish eating. That is where they went, to go get food while we're still talking about this, because it would be helpful to hear from our very most recent alumni, some of their thoughts on this. So others?
Yeah. And I think, I think that one thing that I did hear, Craig, which reflects, I think, the responsiveness, which I'm, you know, really happy about, is that recognizing the over 50 years of history, tradition in Richfield as, you know, making that connection from our, the pride we have in our past as it moves into the future. And so I think as we continue to tell that story, you know, to be able to show some of that continuity. And so, you know, even if we were to go hypothetically with the current image, you know, we could have visuals that actually, if we could find any photographs of that on it. It's mythical, isn't it, with all those diamonds?
Isn't it really? Is that more founded?
Oh, is that right? Yeah. Well, at any rate, you know, just actually have a visual on what this evolution is. Because I think we have heard, I mean, this is, I think, a piece where we're wanting to do that slightly challenging straddle of a community that has one foot in the past and then, but looking to the future. And so I think, you know, as we navigate that, I think we can, we can do it gracefully, but we have to do it thoughtfully. Yeah.
Looking to see if there are other thoughts or questions from the board.
I'll just see what they have to lie.
One more, one more point. And so just for the purpose of reflecting to the public some internal conversations, my understanding, and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we needed to feel a sense of urgency, and just sort of reflecting again on what you said, Crystal, that doing it right is more important than doing it fast. And so.
I think that that jive is what you told us, Craig?
I mean, I think there's a couple of things for consideration. So yes, we absolutely want to get this right. There is no deadline. However, we need to acknowledge publicly that we have partner C E L who will take us a certain amount on the contract that they currently have.
Sure.
If we are, you know, and I'm not going to renegotiate publicly or make Craig's life awkward, but at a certain point, they will have done their diligence. And so then it will be up to us what those next steps are. I don't know where that time is in the contract. And then also for our ability, I mean, obviously, we have previously launched with multiple Spartans, multiple Rs, multiple everything. And so the consequence would be another year going that direction. And the other consequence, which again is not a big change from the past, would also make it a little more challenging from a facility perspective as we do upgrades over the next set of time to integrate anything into that work. And so those are just the challenges for us to be aware of as we move forward.
But at least in terms of orders of magnitude, we're probably talking about a time horizon of months as opposed to weeks to get this right.
Any other comments or questions? And we still don't have our two recent drafts, so perhaps we can follow up with them after the meeting to get additional.
So I will share, because I missed, just from the student perspective, this was presented with the Student Council of Richfield High School, both the Spartan logo, which they loved the first time, they did not like the first R, they liked the second one a lot better. So there was a level of student engagement that was a part of this process as well that they shared out during their connection too.
All right. And then Mary just ran to grant the two gentlemen. Obviously, it's in the awkward time where the Board and City Council ate during the study session, and they were a little bit late because of location. And so we're making sure that they get food, but we also don't want to shut out Nissir and Diego from the conversation. So Mary is checking to see if they wanted to share anything in relation to that.
In the meantime, so what, the R that you were referring to, was this R in the presentation?
The R, I think it was one of mine.
No, like you liked yours, but I'm saying, the other you said that.
The first one was the one that incorporated ourselves, that was kind of a loopy, had an R and a B in it.
And I'm sorry, I put you all, I can draw one out.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, so this would be the third, this is the third R.
Yeah. I've seen this one, but I'm still hearing from staff and coaches and athletes that they don't care for this one as much.
What we would like is to do what you're saying, is that this R is going to be on everything for the purpose of unifying.
So the goal is our district image is represented by this, or as we're going back with the stakeholder group, our plan is to outreach and get individuals involved so that that gets redrafted in a different way. But that would be, so the Richfield High School would have that information, that would show up on signage at each one of our buildings, it would show up on our website, on letterhead. And then as we kind of showed it here, that there are also ways that it would show up in athletic apparel as well and connecting in that different way.
So Diego, Luis, and Nissir, I hope we didn't pull you away from your meal too much, but we, as the most recent alumni in the room and as board members, for at least one more meeting, certainly wanted to hear if there was anything that you wanted to share just about what you have seen or experienced in the process up to this point with the caveat that this is not final. This is going to continue to undergo more change.
Well, I, I don't think I could design a brand to be in charge of this stuff. Because thinking that the Spartan head is too scary for elementary kids, I wouldn't really, I wouldn't, right over my head whenever I think of that. Terms of the R, I don't know what to say about that one. It's an R to B. I don't know how, I don't know how crazy it can get. Or, you know, you guys said you wanted to be more simpler or more modern, so I don't, I mean, I would just pick a modern font or Google a modern font. I don't, I think, don't underestimate it. Don't underestimate the simplicity of an R.
Can you go back to the last slide?
Diego, on the other hand.
He's a, he's a nice.
The only thing I don't like is that this, this like pops out a little bit, it's kind of weird in my opinion. And then it also makes it short. It looks from distance, it makes this look shorter than this thing, which, I don't know. Just having this out is just a little too weird, I think having any more out here.
It's like a damn.
Yeah.
This is like, this is like arguing whether about the toilet paper, it should be flipped in the top.
I like everything else.
You're a monster.
It bothers me.
So we've heard there are lots of different twists on it. One of the pieces, just in addition to showing that motion, the two angles there, the one at the top and the one at the bottom, were intended to mimic some of the diamond shapes. So that was another connection back to the R. But again, we've heard that there are a lot of little things like that that bug people. And so we're trying to do some analysis and figure out where are there ways that we can connect in a different way that is more distinguished and distinctive and grown, that approach.
Thanks, Diego.
All right. Who I do, agenda item number two of the superintendent report. All right. So we are bringing back to the board as part of the superintendent report a conversation around the R C E P program and a possible relocation. We are in conversation with Hope Church. And to take us back in time a little bit, we had approval from the board to begin negotiations with Hope Church in regards to a location for R C E P. And so I want to talk a little bit about R C E P, I want to talk a little bit about Hope Church and the partnership, where we are in the process and just sort of gauge support from the board as we have this as a conversation. So R C E P is our Richfield College Experience Program. It is a small alternative learning program. So it's for students who have traditionally not been successful at Richfield High School or joined our Richfield R C E P program after coming in from other schools, often not succeeding in the traditional larger high school experience. Officially, there's a 62-student official student count, and the average daily attendance is about 45 students. And 79% of our students are students of color. Typically, it's students who are credit deficient, who are not gaining credits in the traditional high school. And so we're looking for different ways to serve students in a more creative model. A couple of years ago, we redesigned this program, moved it to Normandale to try to have our students succeeding in high school while also gaining some college credits at the same time. Some of the things that we've done to make our program more innovative have been successful in terms of the students gaining more credits for high school. It has not been successful in the same way in terms of gaining college credits. So we really haven't had that Normandale component blossom in the same way that we had Hope when we launched that program. The other thing that is happening at Normandale is our lease runs out in about one year, and so we are needing to move either in this fall or a fall from now. And so we were kind of left with that as an option. And in negotiations with Normandale Community College, they will allow us to move the program either this fall, meaning 1920, or in the fall of 2021. So realistically, that leaves us with two options. Option one is to retain R C E P in Normandale for another year with a required move in 2021. And option two is really to move R C E P. And so what we started to do was look at option one and what are the, what are the components of leaving R C E P at Normandale for one year? So first, it's important to note that in 1920, the final year of our lease in our program at Normandale, if we were to stay, they are actually engaging in large facility construction. And so as part of that lease, we would need to be aware that our program is going to be moved all across the campus on multiple occasions as they are utilizing that space. From there, we would then be looking to move the students back to Richfield, and they would probably go into the central building, the location currently housing central office as we move back to the high school. Then the remodel is hitting central, which would require them to move from that hallway to another hallway, at which then those rooms would be updated and they would be able to move back a year later. Essentially, by staying at Normandale, we're requiring those students to be moved in 1920, 2021, 2122, and 2223, four years in a row, sort of putting the ability to stay in one location, one situation really at risk. So looking at that and knowing that our students haven't been successful in a traditional situation, we really didn't want to do things that would marginalize them further. So we wanted to look at a solid location where R C E P could stay in the same location for extended period of time. So we wanted to look at options for bringing the program back to Richfield. And so as we were exploring options, we found the, and came across the space at Hope Church. The physical location at Hope Church on Portland is actually was Portland Elementary, built by Richfield Public Schools in 1955 by then superintendent Harry Rumpel. The plaque is actually still there, and it's exciting because as we've done our remodels within Richfield Public Schools, we've learned that these buildings were built very well, and so we didn't do a lot of teardowns as part of our renovation. We're looking at doing some updates in terms of our renovations. So this actually used to be a Richfield Public Schools. So it's designed to be a school with actual classrooms. It's also important to note that it is literally right in the center of the city, located on a public bus line, and it's also a space that's designed to support all student needs. Then we look at the Hope Church component in terms of looking at that space and how we would work to use that space. Basically, leasing space, and we currently do that also at 287, is functionally a business arrangement. It is us agreeing to come to, and what we would be talking about, and what we're talking about informally, is a three to five-year lease, which would sort of encompass the time that our students would be shuffled around. It also allows us to examine how things are going over those three to five years, and we would be able to build and support the program in that location. As far as the partnership goes, it's important as we work with partners to create leases that we work to implement Richfield Schools exactly as Richfield Schools would do on our own property. And so what that means is, is that within our lease, within our agreement, we have clear language that all Richfield Public Schools policies, all Richfield Public Schools practices are supported at the location. And so functionally, it's as though Richfield Public Schools is literally there in that physical location, just on a different site. I've become aware that there has been some community conversation, some questions around gender inclusion and things of that nature. As a response, we, as a district office, walked through gender inclusion policy at all of our policies with the Hope Church team, who made it very clear to us and repeated in no uncertain terms that our space, were we to use that as a lease, would be fully the space of Richfield Public Schools with the policies and practices of Richfield Public Schools. We've taken multiple tours, including with board members, to examine the space, which would have a separate parking lot, a location with a separate entrance, and then it would be separately housed from the Montessori and the early childhood program. They're located there. So again, I'm bringing this back as part of the superintendent report. And so as, at a previous meeting, we talked about support for moving forward in this conversation. We've now come to a point where we are closing in on a lease. At a planning commission, there was approval to have a permit to reengage that as a school and use all of the classrooms as a school. This would then go to the city council tomorrow. But for us, then, that would trigger our ability to then finalize or take those next steps to a lease. And so we wanted to have a conversation with the board, given that community conversation, to see if there are any questions or what in terms of gaining support for continuing to move forward. So with that, I will open it up to the board for questions or comments.
What are the ages of our students there?
So the age of our students are 16 to 21.
The lease terms of finances would be basically the same as on.
It would be slightly increased in comparison to Normandale. We fall within our overall capacity from a lease letting perspective as a board, so we're not making a large burden in terms of the change of price.
Has there been any discussion with the students about that?
Yeah. So members of our leadership team, in the community conversation, trying to, members of our leadership team, including Dr. Will Hyde, had introduced questions about utilizing the space to both students and also the staff. A couple of things that came back was, one, was A, no concern from a staff perspective, it's a physical location. And then multiple of the students shared some of their experiences with Hope Church. So Young Life is a program that is connected to Hope Church. They've actually volunteered and given thousands of hours to Richfield Public Schools. Many of our students actually in R C E P are directly connected to Hope Church. Actually, some of them are in the photos in regard to Young Life and some of their advertising materials. And so they had positive experiences and none, no concerns whatsoever. We also heard that it was a positive experience in terms of being able to come back together as a group. One of the key components of Normandale was kids go off all across campus. This would be a small, unifying community space to help our students have a more traditional, traditional ability to get together as a small group. Again, when you have 40 kids attending at a day, having them across a larger campus can be challenging.
So this is a slight aside, but I think you had mentioned in your presentation that some of the, so essentially the curricular offerings in terms of the R C E P program, that we would be continuing sort of unchanged in terms of how that program is structured curriculum-wise, including access to post-secondary options if appropriate for any given student?
Yes. The only curricular change that would occur due to the site, there's actually a couple of things, well, there's actually several things better for the curriculum component, but then also for the student services component on that site. One, there's actually a gymnasium on that site, so instead of only having online P E, the students actually can engage in.
That was what happened.
Online P E? Oh, my daughter did it.
That's like my typical truth.
So there are choices at high school for online P E or actual P E in person? This actually provides that as an option. R C E P has actually not been able to use that as an option previously. There's actually sinks in each classroom, which there aren't necessarily at Normandale, and so there are certain things that they can, can do. And then also one unique component that actually makes it a, this is more student services, it makes it more a gender inclusive building than actually any of our current buildings is, is most of the classrooms were actually designed as elementary pre-k or kindergarten classrooms. So there's actually two individual stall bathrooms in most of the classrooms, which actually allows each of our students to use a bathroom of their choice, an unlabeled bathroom, and it's something that we actually don't currently have prior to any renovations within Richfield Public Schools.
There'll be more restrooms per. And they're all be, they'll all be unlimited. You know, see, the, if the idea of this has generated any excitement, it is. I mean, we haven't talked about the concern raised above the church itself, which is that they have a stated position that marriage is between a man and a woman only, and that all sex outside of a marriage is immoral or a sin. You know, but them being open about it allowed us to come with all of our armful of policies and say, you know, our main concern is that our students are allowed to bring their true and honest selves every day and be who they are so that they feel, you know, supported well enough to learn properly, right, to be in a good frame of mind to learn. And so, you know, we are in sort of an imperfect place with this, right? We have the four years of wandering if we were to stay at Normandale versus there aren't a lot of educational spaces available within the community at large that we could use as an alternative, I'm aware of none. And so, but when we partner with a vendor, of any vendors, they aren't often as open about their, about what they believe or what they, you know, than this faith-based community that happens to be a landlord. And so, but it did allow us to be open about what our needs are and very pointed about them. So when we met as, you know, with the administrative team and Crystal was there, it was a very pointed discussion about this is what's important to us and we, this is, this can, this is inviolable to us. Our students need to come in and know that when they are here, they are their honest and true selves with, and they will be supported and welcomed. And they didn't, they were completely fine with that. They said they know that as business owners of a sort, this is what they're entertaining as business owners as well. And that this is, you know, they have things to reconcile themselves, but I feel comfortable that we will be able to implement our policies. And we've, as we said to them, if something goes sideways with that, we will just turn and walk. I mean, is that the impression you had from that conversation?
Oh, we got to.
Either.
I mean, I think they were very clear that we have our policies, we have our beliefs and our practices, and they will be implemented on the sites. And I think we were socially awkwardly direct with them about how we are welcoming and supporting all students, and that's not a negotiable conversation. And I think to really understand it, you also have to understand the physical space. So there is a church here, there is a long tunnel here, there are doors and more doors, and then there is a physical space that is ARCEP. There is a door, or that would be ARCEP. There is a door that is on the opposite side of the church that our students would enter. There is a parking lot away from where the church location is where our students would enter. It would be repainted for our students, it would be re-updated for our students. And we have told them, and they have reviewed all of our materials. What we were told is that they are excited about any opportunity, ongoing opportunity to partner with us, and that really doesn't come with conditions.
I think as the other board member that was able to visit the space last week along with Tim, it was very helpful to see. It is hard to picture a space that would be more conducive to immediate occupancy for our program. And I don't think this was said directly, so I think it is important to articulate it. The space itself is entirely secular, so there are not religious signs, icons, et cetera, in any of the spaces that we would be occupying in that aspect.
As kind of we have the opportunity to.
Exactly.
Cover them, take them down, remove them.
And there is one shared space that would be part of the agreement, which is the gym, and that also is and will be a secular space. I think a couple of other things that I wanted to touch on, you know, the superintendent mentioned the strong and long history with Young Life that exists with Richfield Public Schools. And I want to acknowledge that it has been incredibly positive, and I see the Young Life staff members out in the community, I think, more than just about anybody else. But I also want to acknowledge that it is different because in those settings, it is Young Life staff coming into our buildings and our spaces when they are with us. And this would be us entering into a business agreement with the church itself for facilities. So I want to acknowledge that we have a strong history, and there have not been challenges, at least that have ever been shared with me, around religious beliefs or values, and we have no indication based on what has been shared that that would happen in the Hope space, but I also want to acknowledge that it is different. I think the other thing I just want to acknowledge is that I am still sitting with questions around this, and I think, you know, other board members maybe as well. I very much appreciate that the draft lease that is in progress offers very clear and very specific parameters around the usage of space, around the Minnesota Human Rights Act, around our district's policies and practices, and yet there are philosophical questions that remain. And so one thing that was helpful for me as board chair was talking with our district's legal counsel just around our responsibilities and our limitations as a public entity potentially entering into a business agreement with a faith institution. And so I think ultimately, you know, just to summarize some of the conversation that I had with our legal counsel is, you know, board members should be thinking about the needs of the program, about the physical space, about what has been negotiated in the lease, and then put that alongside other concerns that you may be having or are hearing. But, you know, in our conversations, we really should be focusing on that negotiated agreement and on the needs of the program that has been articulated thus far. So I just wanted to make sure that I shared that along with just acknowledging I appreciate and hear the concerns, and I'm very much sitting with them myself.
I remember visiting the program when it was still at Central. And the students, the feel at that program is completely different to the high school. And these are students who are very often older, they're working. I am very afraid that moving them around is just going to put, it's just so easy to say, I'm not even doing this. I think once they get to that place, I think they're making this big effort to continue their education, to get a high school diploma, to get some college credits. And I don't think that at that age and the responsibilities that they have, the raising families, some of them, some of them are just taking care of their younger siblings. They have jobs that they go to after they go to take their classes. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable putting all these burdens in them into, you know, with the chuffing around. And the one thing that would make me think, yeah, let's go someplace, but that's, like you said, it's really not another space. Like, there are so many regulations that schools need to have and buildings and structures. It's not just, we cannot just do this program everywhere. It has to be a very specific space. And, and I'm really thinking of those kids.
Yeah. A stable environment.
Yes.
Even if it's slightly imperfect. I mean, for me, I'm with Crystal in that there are aspects of it that I struggle with. And I can imagine there are faith-based communities in the world that I would not be willing to partner with, even if we absolutely needed the space. Because their, their, their members of that church have failed in demonstrating any civility or ability to be tolerant on the street. Right? We've had them visit our school or the sidewalk adjacent to our school, right? And I don't think we would, you know, I don't think we would have the same view of something like that. But the community that we interact with the most, that happens to emanate from that faith community, is actually extremely tolerant of the students in our district and supportive of them, to the best that we know. And so that gives me some, some, you know, a level of comfort with it, even if it's not perfect.
I also feel like if we were to say from a business transaction point of view, if we go and say, oh, we're not doing business of you because of your points of view, I don't think that we can say then when we hear in the news that there are bakeries denying cakes and denying venues over the same belief. I mean, if we did that, then we cannot argue against that. I think, I mean.
We can talk about that outside of, I mean, we'll never leave this meeting if we start this.
It's just to me, it's really, I just want to make sure the kids, they have a place they can be for a few years where they can focus on their studies in addition to the million things that they're doing, without having to worry and thinking about logistics of going someplace else.
When the location is so convenient for them to be able to do that.
Right. And I mean, we talked about the, if we put barriers in front of the students in this program, like have it remotely located. You know, this is on a bus line, it's on a main road, it's close to several other bus lines, it's right in the middle of town. It has a lot of things going for it.
No, I just said it's in Richfield. Other than going all the way.
Yeah.
Which is kind of far.
I'd like to call a question, this would go on for all night.
Yes. Well, and this is not an action item, so.
It's just there for me.
We are still in a superintendent update, which are all items of the discussion, I think, and I am.
I regret to inform you, John, this is not up to a.
And I do know that we also have staff that are waiting to present later in the agenda. So I think the intention of this was for the superintendent to get a sense from board members where people are feeling. Do you have what you need?
I feel like, so summary transition, I'm feeling support to continue negotiating towards a lease. I am hearing something that also partners with what my beliefs are, is that without condition, we will support every single one of our students regardless of the location, and that will be the lens that we use. We won't negotiate or get into any agreement where we don't feel like our students will be supported in any location or within any program. And the expectation would be that our policies and our practices of full inclusion of all students and full support of all students is really non-negotiable from our side. And so we'll continue on in those conversations as long as we are confident that that can be the case, and we'll try to find the best location for Hope. And our set, yeah, that Hope and ARCEP partnership or ARCEP without that Hope partnership. And so we'll continue on down that road and plan to be back in our next meeting if we get to that point in a lease agreement. Thank you. With that, I'm going to bring up the Q count, our Q count team to come on up and present to talk about some of the exciting things going on in our.
Would it be easier for the board for us to share from the space? Can we click from here? Whatever you are comfortable with.
I think that'll work. I'm not sure, otherwise I've got a mouse that I can, I'll add you, I'll take you down the road.
Also mouthing. Feel free to pull up another chair, whatever you need.
I've been sitting for a while, so.
You can stand if you want.
I think, first of all, we'll just do some brief introductions. Of course, my name is Emily Burt, and I am in my third year as a peer reviewer, and this is my second year as the lead of that particular team. We have Jonathan Hyer, who's been on the steering committee for five whole years, provides a really great historical lens for us, and he is currently also a peer reviewer. Brenda Nielsen, of course, the director of human resources, and Nancy Statchell, president of, or president. I kind of like think of her as the president of Sheridan Hills, but of course, the principal of Sheridan Hills. And Andrew Emanuel can't be here tonight, but we make up the steering committee, and thank you for allowing us to come and just share some survey results and some program updates with you folks.
And thank you for your patience as it's taken a long time to get to this section of the chat.
All right. So, yeah, so we're really excited to be able to share with you tonight. And we wanted to share with you and focus on some of the aspects of the program that have maybe had some more significant changes this year. There's lots of areas in the program, but these are the ones that we wanted to touch base with you on tonight. And so those are Learning Academies, teacher evaluation, the PLCO Professional Learning Academy Communities, our new mentorship program, and then the student development goal setting.
Thank you, Jonathan. So significant changes, there was restructuring of Learning Academy for this particular year, as you folks of course are aware. Learning Academy is our in-house professional development system, and it's a great way for Richfield teachers to learn from expert staff in different areas. So the restructuring allowed for different formats of instruction. So we still have the face-to-face courses where teachers came together as a community, but we also offered some online and then some blended courses where there were components online and also face-to-face meetings. Another big change is that in the past, Learning Academies were all eight hours, no matter the topic, no matter, you know, what the facilitator, you know, might have planned for that. Now they can be anywhere from two to 12 hours, so that allows people to take more than one and kind of chunk things up, maybe two hours here, six hours there, so really gain expertise in a broader range of topics than ever before and do so in formats that might be more conducive to the way they desire to learn. And so feedback from that piece at this point is that 74% of staff agreed or strongly agreed that the changes in the format that we made really affected their participation or even their interest if they weren't able to participate this year. We also have some hard data we'd like to share if that would be okay. So just looking, last year, this year, and then we are offering a summer session this year. So last year, we filled, so the difference between, I guess I want to say the first two, the seats filled in total participants. So I use the term seats filled because some people might have participated in more than one academy, and we didn't necessarily track that last year. So that number of, in 1718, of 184 seats filled, that was how many people signed up, but it did not, and we didn't anticipate counting if somebody signed up for more than one. So you can notice the difference, you know, over 100 more seats filled this year, and then the possibility for seats being filled was greatly expanded. So because we were able to offer different formats, we allowed more opportunity for teachers to participate. And then this summer, we have 64 seats filled so far, and we're not closed. So we still may have teachers be signing up for some of those course offerings that are happening in June, July, and August. So total participants last year was about 49% of eligible staff participating. This year, it's 51%. So, you know, wondering we have is, are we reaching the same people, are we reaching different people? What might be some reasons for people that choose not to participate? And then we have, you know, some data on what the formats look like. So we still are heavily face-to-face based, and I'm wondering, you know, of the steering committee and our staff is, if we are to offer even more increased numbers of blended and online courses, might that reach more of our staff? Because our desire is to reach as many staff as we possibly can. What questions might there be around some of this data?
I'm worried I missed this as we were passing cough drops down the table, so I want to acknowledge that. The seats filled significant increase, does that mean, I really think you said this while I was passing cough drops, that means that while the total participants, you know, just went up by 2%, that seat fill increases significantly more than 2%? So is it that the people who were participating were taking more offerings?
Yes, and so we had people take multiple courses. We also had people go over the 12-hour amount, and so they were participating at that point without the hourly rate. You get paid for 12 hours at the rate of $35 an hour. So there were folks that were, you know, had logged 20, 25 hours by then, when we tallied everything up. So the seat, I think the seats filled and the possibility of more seats being filled is what we're most excited about. Other pieces on that?
All right. Some of the other data collected through the survey is just about the peer review process itself, and then the overall satisfaction with the Q count process or program. We're really excited to see our staff excited and feeling supported by the peer review process. That's one of the big components of the Q count program, where teachers get a chance to reflect on a lesson with a trained peer reviewer and to really think about what are the next steps that they can take to make their classrooms even better. And so we really are seeing some really exciting data about that. The teachers are feeling that the process is supporting them, and it's also impacting their instruction. That tends to go along with the innovations that Craig was talking about, and we're hoping to see those as well. One of the questions that we had as looking at the survey was the overall satisfaction with the Q count program seems to be staying about the same. And so our question to ourselves is, you know, what is that about? And what might be some of the things that we could do to look at that? Some of the anecdotal data that we saw, looking at the survey and some of the longer responses that we allow, seem to be around the area of maybe the professional learning communities and how we can either streamline those or make those more of a consistent experience for the teachers. for the teachers in district. And so that'll be one of the areas that we're looking at as we go through next year. Any questions on that set of data?
So it says 128 staff responded. Is that out of the entire district?
Yeah, so we have about 100, 367 certified staff, and so that is one of our questions too. How can we get more people to respond to this anonymous survey so that we get some clear data around what people are feeling?
Yeah, because it looks like overall satisfaction with QComp doesn't look so great.
Right, right.
I mean, the other two, but...
Yeah, and so that was one of our questions too. That number, 128, is kind of consistent with what we've had in the past, maybe a little bit lower.
Like last year was 138 respondents out of the total staff, so incentivizing people during a time of a lot of survey fatigue can be difficult, but we really do value, you know, their input and opinions.
So what, besides, I mean, you have like three data points, and what other things do you ask? Like, do you ask if they, do you ask what they might like to see or so they can request different types of educational things or...
Yep, so there are longer form responses. The survey is set up based on guidelines from MDE. They provide a template that we can change as needed, so it's kind of set up that way. One of the discussions we had as a committee was, at the end of the school year, was maybe we want to ask different questions or ask questions in different ways where we might get more responses that might tell us something a little bit deeper, especially on the pieces of that overall satisfaction level.
It is clear that something changed. I mean, if they, the process supported the development and it impacted instruction, yet there's a massive drop off to satisfaction with the program. I'd love to know more about that.
Would it be true that, the way I'm interpreting this is that, obviously what you guys are telling us about is your efforts as a professional, as a learning academy, however, QComp also has a compensation component, which we're not assessing and which is presumably somewhat related to but actually partially different from your work, because I, I mean, the compensation is something that's negotiated as opposed to something that you can directly impact. Is that correct?
Part of it, there are different areas of compensation. Part of the compensation piece, of course, is the evaluative component, assigning ratings on a rubric. There also is award money for reflecting, for creating and reflecting both PGP and PLC goals, achievement of those goals, and of course, achievement of, you know, school improvement plan goals. And then Learning Academy would be another area where there's possible money to be earned by each staff member.
I guess my personal feeling is I don't see a disconnect between the data that's presented. I feel like it's just, we're just missing the dissatisfaction, or not dissatisfaction, we're missing the sort of level satisfaction with the compensation side of things.
Right, it's entirely possible that the drop off is due to that it did all these good things, but we're not compensated enough for it despite the fact that it did all these good things, so.
There you go.
I mean, and there are, there are people that comment that way, that it feels time-consuming, of course, to go through the process, and there's some dissatisfaction with different areas, but we think that perhaps better crafted survey questions might be more helpful next year. Sure.
Okay.
Paying people more will get them more satisfied.
One of the things that we continue to work on every year is our interrated reliability. That's the way that we can have a consistent experience for all the teachers, no matter who the peer reviewer is that they have, or also interrated reliability between peer reviewers and administrators. And so we've done a few things this year in conjunction with the district to try to make our interrated reliability better. We've had people from the Danielson group come here and spend some time with us as a whole group. The peer reviewers also had some intensive training with the Danielson group, and we continue to work on that. We feel like it's a cornerstone of our program that we have a consistent experience for all the teachers going through it. We want them to have the same experience no matter who they have, and so we're going to continue to work on that. And we feel like we've done a lot of things this year, but we'll continue to work on that next year as well.
A huge change this year, this year was that the peer review team took over mentoring new-to-profession staff, so those with fewer than two years of experience were mentored more intensively by the peer review team. So we had 37 new-to-profession out of that large hiring pool last year, that large group, were mentored by members of our group. And so it typically looked like meetings every two weeks with that person. We did informal observations and helping them get ready for admin observations. We thought about lesson planning with them in accordance with both Danielson and the four instructional agreements in Richfield. We talked about instructional goals and coached around that, and we also talked with them and worked with them on behavior management and classroom environment, creating that community feel. By the end of the year, a survey to that group showed that 94% felt very supported by their mentor. So that was really an exciting change to be able to dig deep with folks that were new to profession. So not only did they, they have a veteran teacher mentor them, we were able to bring forth some of their ideas as new folks and acknowledge the value that comes from someone who is new to profession and kind of marry those two pieces, hopefully in order to retain, you know, the brightest and the best in our community. So we will be continuing that next year with the new staff that are hired and then the folks that had a mentor this year will continue on with a reduced level of support for their second year.
That's a very impressive program. That is exactly what those new teachers need.
It's been extremely rewarding.
Very nicely done, yeah.
We think it's a positive change, so we're happy.
Yeah, it's great.
And then I think our last piece was other questions or next steps. Our next steps, of course, are continue with different Learning Academy options and making efforts to increase participation, investigate some of those reasons with the lower level of overall satisfaction for the program, and create an action plan to increase that satisfaction rate. That's something we want to work on in the coming school year. And of course, increase the number of respondents to the survey, and then, of course, continue with the implementation of the mentorship program. So what questions might we be able to ask or answer or respond to from your group?
I asked mine already as we were going.
Yeah, we kind of jumped in while we went through it.
I just want to thank you for your work. I'm impressed with the work that you've done and supporting our overall professional development among our staff. It's great.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Jonathan and Emily, have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, so for the last part, we will bring up Mr. Holgi to come back and talk about health and safety, our partner from IDA.
Thanks to you as well for hanging with us.
So thank you very much. Just a couple of quick highlights, and we're going to do a real quick overview of our health and safety program. This is something we do on an annual basis just to make sure the board is aware of the things that we are working on. Dan Holcome from IDA is here. He represents IDA and works with us one day a week in the district. One of the things that is, a variety of different things through state statute have come up is finding out that Richfield has been much more progressive on some of our testing and compliance around indoor air quality, around radon testing, around wet and water testing. And so you'll hear some of that information as well as some of the other work that we do with our OSHA law throughs. And so then I'm going to turn it over to Dan to go through that information.
Well, thank you for giving the opportunity to speak on some of the larger health and safety tasks from this past year. So we'll start off with the health and safety tasks from this year, as well as the mock OSHA inspection that occurred earlier this year, and then fiscal year 20 projects. So I do have slides for all these, so I'll just go through them. Wet and water testing, sports field testing, bleacher inspections, playground inspections, and annual training. Custodial was done in this class, was done in this room today, actually, and then the bus driver, science teachers from service, and our teachers are completed in August. So Richfield, just like Craig said, they have been doing wet and water testing since 2001, so they've been doing a very great job. So this past year, in October, November, we did our initial testing, and then retested a few fixtures in January of this year. A total of 413 fixtures were tested, 33 fixtures were tested above the designated action level of 15 parts per billion, in which Richfield has chosen. And the fixtures that were above 15 parts per billion were either replaced or sampled, water shut off, or they do have a sticker posted above each fixture, which is the sticker bottom bomb, right? And we do have a management plan that states all our testing results, our schedule and map of locations that's located on our district website, health and safety page for all public and teachers and staff and students to look at. Any questions on wet and water? I know we kind of went through the plan last year, but we finally got the results.
I'm sorry, our threshold is 15 parts per billion. What is the, what is the broadly accepted level, acceptable level? So let, let me not word it that way. What is the action level in, you know, more broadly?
So I have schools that still have the 20 parts per billion, and it's the old EPA Tools for Schools threshold. I have some that are 10. So the actual public works threshold is 15, bottled water is five, and MDE and MDH do have two parts of billion as the recommendation. For that to occur would be a lot of, a lot of resources and time to budget, all that else for wet and water, for wet and water free filters or changing of fixtures altogether would be very difficult. But we can always work our way towards overall threshold.
Thank you. Did you, one of the data points that we've heard in prior years was follow-up testing after the replacement. Is that something that you can report on now or that we would expect down the road?
So we did, so we did follow-up testing on replaced fixtures, and I believe three of the six that were changed out came back as below, as below 15 parts per billion. The other three are, had to stick around there still. And then that was, that was a, an old, an old classroom that used to be a fax room, and it kind of got changed into a teacher workshop area. So all these fixtures aren't required to be used in that room, but Dan wanted to test them all in case ever was changed back to a fax room.
Okay.
So sports field testing, not a requirement, but definitely is beneficial to have done to ensure the safety of public students and staff. So we had this tested in August of 2018. There's 10 locations throughout the, throughout the sports field at the high school field, and you want to keep all the Gmax levels at each location below 200. So our highest Gmax rating at a location was 177, so that's, that's good. It's just good for a field that's 10 years old too. I think the field was, was, played in 2009 or 10. And we also had it retested because Dan, Dan and his, Dan and his crew wanted to do some maintenance, so they added some of the infill, some of the sand and rubber on the field as well as swept the whole field to try to fluff it up more. And it did help, it helped the results a little bit. Our highest Gmax then was 170, and proper maintenance can help prolong the life of a sports field. So bleacher inspections, so we had this completed too at all, at all bleachers within the district, and it's part of the Minnesota Bleacher Safety Act that came into play in 2001, I believe, every five years that they have to be re-inspected. And it's just to help public students and staff ensure that they're not going to have any bridges collapse, and any small kids aren't going to get their head stuck into a, into a crevice, and everything was, and everything came back great. There was one broken guardrail fence that was repaired right away, and it, and everything was, was good with that. So a new thing this year that they put in the play was playground inspections for custodial maintenance staff. So we did have a training on that in January by a certified playground safety inspector. So it's documented monthly inspections of all playgrounds, and those are, those are conducted by the custodians or the maintenance staff, and all, and all the findings from those can get worked on as soon as possible by the maintenance and custodial staff as So earlier this year, we had a mock OSHA inspection from Mike Wild for Metro XU. Metro XU assists with health and safety throughout the metro area of school districts. He supplies Richfield a mock OSHA inspection every year. This year, we looked at the middle school and the bus garage, and the findings are as follows. I do have pictures of some files on the next slide. And this is a mock OSHA inspection, just trying to help us out in case there was OSHA on site, trying to fix some items before they, before it happens with an actual inspector. So the upper right, upper left, sorry, is, is the kitchen freezer, so the, so the emergency knob was frozen, it wouldn't go in, and I may believe that was why. The reason why is because that door was open a lot the day before for delivery, it could have melted some of the ice out on the door, and then, and then refroze to keep, to keep the knob open. So I did share this with all the custodial staff today to ensure that they're going to be, if they're walking by the kitchen, just to open it up, just to, just to, just to make sure it's going to work in case there was, there was a kitchen staff member that does get locked in there on accident. Bottom left, there was, there was some table in the stand that was blocking emergency exits by the, by the pool. Upper, upper middle, that is a machine guard that was off the table saw. All the industrial tech staff get trained every August on machine guarding, so that's, there's no reason for that at all. Bottom middle, that was an eye wash in the chemical storage room that, that was not working properly. Upper right, fire signature's blocked. You need to have three feet of clearance for that. And the bottom right was in the pool area, there was no fire signature in the, in the holder. It's not required right now for to have a fire signature in that area, but if we were going to take all the fire signatures out, we would have to just take out that cabinet so no one thinks that there's a fire signature in there in case of emergency.
Quick question on, so some of the specific items seem to be relatively common ones for us to get. So extension cord being used as permanent wiring, for example, is one that it seems like that particular practice keeps popping up. I'm assuming that we, I mean, like you said, you talk about the training with the guarding and whatnot, and do we feel like there's more opportunity for us to do training and be proactive with some of these kind of consistent findings?
So what, part of what the OSHA training does is identify what those areas are for the opportunities. I think there is. A lot of it's the due diligence, and probably our next step is looking at what is that enforcement regimen, and are we empowering custodial teams to identify and to communicate where something is, if they're noticing it, and probably doing some training around that along with training with the principals and program supervisors so that they're watching for those same things as well. We can train a lot of people, but matters of convenience sometimes become a challenge to overcome unless you have eyes on the ground or eyes looking at it all the time. And what the appropriate reporting structure is. So I think that's maybe where we would go next, but how do we empower others who are seeing it and noticing it and encouraging them to report it.
Okay, thanks.
So some new products for next year, that'll be district-wide radon testing. I do have a slide after this on that, so we'll talk about that then. And then also lesion health testing and an action plan. Dan Kreisinger's working with J-Tech on that, to have an action plan and testing involved to prevent any, to any disperse of a disease based off of any condensation from a cooling tower, and also having that fan below it to the public. You might have heard some of those issues from local businesses in the past couple of years, and then also health and safety activities from the referendum. So radon, so testing will begin in between the months of November and March, starting this year. All, all schools will be tested, all rooms at ground level or below ground level that are continuously occupied will be tested. It's required now to have all the results be brought to the board as well as MDH. So after we do test, this fall, this winter, we'll be coming back to the board to present in the spring to let everyone know what the results were. And also, Richfield Public Schools has been testing for radon since the 2009, 2010 school year, so they're definitely, they're definitely ahead of the curve from all the, all the news stories and all that, so doing a great job with that. Any questions on any health and safety topics?
Does OSHA come through every year or is it random?
Nope. OSHA, OSHA's random. I don't actually know when last time OSHA was on site here, it was probably at least five years ago. From my understanding now is that, is that OSHA in certain areas throughout the metro are trying to, are trying to get at two public school districts per year. in different areas of the metro. So it's kind of, it's kind of hard to say. I know Bloomington had, had an ocean inspection recently, but what was that?
Getting closer.
So, yeah.
I would say this is helping.
So the reason, so I want to always be prepared, try to train people on certain things. But then again, it's very difficult sometimes to get everyone to get on board and, you know, and, and not use extension cords and plugging them into more extension cords and all that. Just kind of have a lot of people be knowledgeable and have people speak out if they see something.
We do the mock ocean, we rotate buildings to, so we're not doing all the same year, but we're alternating to trade paper inside. And as I said, it's pretty consistent with different buildings as they pop up itself.
Thank you.
All right. So final product of the superintendent report, commendations. Congratulations to the art department from Jen Katzmann, the Brown. So the art department finished up two art shows and we're very proud of our students' accomplishments. Teen art show at Outsbury Park Library, including arts from preschools, Bloomington, Minneapolis and Richfield. 12 awards given out for the Richfield students. Kathryn Erzuwa received an honorable mention for her ceramic cup. Jesse Navarro, third place for a ceramic bird. Joel Schaper placed first in 2D with his painting. And Rowan Papio won a show specifically provided by the Richfield Arts Commission with a ceremony at the RAC meeting in June. So Teacher Miller won't say it, but his daughter Annika also won an award in the show. So we'll acknowledge her also. Metro West was also recently, and our students showed extremely well. To put this one in perspective, we're limited only 10 students and we show against eight other schools, 80 pieces of art, 21 awards, and we had five students receive awards. Really proud of those kids. Every single one of the two students is amazing in itself, being able to participate. Awards and accomplishment went to Anna Jensen for her cloud painting. Phoebe McCarty for her watercolor landscape. Anna Howard for her crystal ball photograph. And Lauren Tensing for her self-portrait oil painting. What's that? The award of excellence went to Andy Tran for his abstract painting. So congratulations to all of those students. Next, Christina Gonzalez, congratulations to our own Director of Student Support Services by being awarded Alumni of the Year for the University of Minnesota School of Social Work on Thursday, April 5th, 2019. Christina was honored by her university colleagues and friends alike, benefiting from her leadership in developing and mentoring new social workers. Her depth of experience, breadth of knowledge and masterful skills in addressing critical issues in social work has made her one of the most sought-after instructors in the School of Social Work. And Richfield is fortunate to have such a highly respected, talented and committed director as part of our leadership team. One last one that's not on here, I just also want to send a commendation out to De'Angelo S. Nikio and Ms. Zer Bolson for their support and service of Richfield Public Schools and our school board showing their ongoing dedication. And again, showing up tonight to complete their service as two students who have graduated and have moved on, but are still and always will be part of Richfield Public Schools. So thank you and congratulations to our two young gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. So we just completed the non-action item section of the agenda. I wanted to just pause and see if board members would benefit from a brief break, given we have been going since 6:00?
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
That would be delightful.
I'm going to, I'm going to take an affirmative from one person. We're going to do it. So we are going to take a brief recess, enough time to stay in stretch, use the restroom, whatever you need to do. And we will attempt to come back around 9:05, which is five minutes from right now. Thank you to our outgoing student board members for calling us back into session at 9:06 PM. The next item is approval of the consent agenda containing routine business items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. We have several old business items before this evening. Three related to existing district policies undergoing revision and one bid award change. So we'll start with a second read of board policy 408 and guidelines around gifts to employees. Superintendent Yunavsky.
All right. So we are looking at just very minor revisions. And so even though we typically look at things three times, there are very few changes in regard to our gift policy, just as a reminder. This helps us define what gifts we are allowed to receive as employees, the processes that are behind that. And then also in our 408.1, some of those specific components of what are the processes and guidelines around? How do we accept gifts? What gifts are appropriate and what steps do we take in that regard? We took feedback from last meeting, also feedback in between. Minor changes and, and functionally almost nothing to bring this up to speed. So we're just reviewing that and seeing if there are any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
So teachers, sometimes we get gift cards. Is that going to be a problem or coffee cups? I get a lot of those and...
So within the guidelines, a gift received from an individual or family from $35 or less is considered nominal value. And then a group, 35 or less.
I only saw five.
So that is it. So $5 is, employees may accept of a promotional value with a resale value of $5 or less, specific to...
An entity trying to do business with the schools.
Right.
A gift from a community member can be up to $35.
Okay. That's, I, I, I understand.
Thank you. Yes. Sorry.
I see it now.
Yes. And then for a group where they, they could gather together up to $100.
I don't know why I didn't see that.
That's okay.
That's within the guidelines. So it's different areas. One's within the guidelines and one's within the overall policy. And the biggest station is trying to do business with, so it's keeping people from...
That makes sense. Yeah. It was the other part because I, I drink so much coffee that my teachers just keep bringing me more coffee cups and gift cards for coffee shops and tea. Yeah, all of the above. So I just started thinking probably similar here. I just wanted to make sure my folks were not going to get in trouble, my teacher folks.
They would not get in trouble for coffee or for smoggers. Yes, sir.
Get in trouble about you?
According to the policy, people are expected to support themselves with that. But then also if there are questions, they go to their building administrator and then if there are questions beyond that, they would come to me. Yes, sir. Part of my job as, as manager of New York Division is to oversee the guidelines and the policies of Richfield Public School for education.
I will say all of my questions and comments were addressed in this version. So seeing or hearing them, we could entertain a motion to approve the revised policy as presented because it doesn't seem like we need to have this one come back for another read.
I will move that we approve the policy as revised.
I will serve it.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the policy is approved. Next is a read of changes to our student dress policy and administrative guideline, both of which have gone through extensive review and revision involving students and staff and community members.
Yes. And you will note, all right, so there are areas that we are looking for some final guidance in, in having that conversation. Both interpretations are in here and there is not complete clarity because we're looking for some clarity around what we are terming as headgear. And so I want to talk about the difference between hats and headgear for use of this policy. There was a lot of conversation that occurred in the safe and supportive schools, also with multiple groups of students and some community members. And so what you'll see yellowed in the policy is the area where we're looking for some board guidance and some input to finalize that work. Hats are defined as headgear that contains a brim. Hats were considered, based on the policy, not acceptable within schools. So brim-based hats. Headgear is anything worn in the head that does not have a brim. Includes but is not meant to be scarves, hoodies, bandanas and other forms of headgear. And this is where, or, and other forms of things on people's heads. This is where it became more complex and there was sort of a split perspective on whether or not this should be allowed or this should not be allowed. Either way, the expectation of all groups, people that supported headgear and people that did not, is that it shouldn't block the face or create a barrier in the students' ability to hear or their ability to engage in language. And then only exceptions should occur to that piece for religious, cultural or medical-based reasons. And so the question then becomes headgear, trying to get some board guidance or input on, are there strong feelings in either direction on that? Because I can tell you there are strong feelings on both sides of that. And just trying to get some additional input to guide our final, even though this says final read, you can note there is some conflict in the wording as we're trying to figure that out. So trying to get a board perspective on headgear defined as anything other than a brim-based hat. And should this be something that we have in schools or should this be something that we don't?
If I could please start.
Please.
So just to clarify, so you're saying that if, if I can wear it, if it doesn't have a brim and it doesn't cover my face?
You can, or it doesn't?
Yeah. And I can show my ears and it doesn't take away from my learning experience?
So if we approve of all headgear?
Then?
Then yes.
Then yes.
And if we don't, then you wouldn't be able to put on a hoodie, a bandana or anything else? So that's where the conflict comes. There are those that believe nothing, unless it's religious or cultural.
Medical?
Or medical. Thank you. And there are those that believe, let those things go.
So is hoodie part of this discussion?
Hoodie would be part of that discussion. Bandana would be, so that where people separate, and there are again, very differing beliefs. Hoodie, bandana, hoodie, bandana, scarf and other forms of headwear. Or should that be in school or should that not be in school?
100% be in school.
Mr. Bolson has a perspective. Yes, sir.
Can't issue any motions, but I've been thinking a lot about this. I always think like, what should I mention at these board meetings?
Good.
It's these hat rules. I think you should, I think a hat or wear a drag or wear. I mean, yeah, there's no, there's no issues in wearing hats, you know? It's not the 90s anymore, you know? And not to really gang sensitive, if you will. And, you know, you know, just work style. Like you said, I mean, I think that's a really good rule, seriously, honesty. You know, because it doesn't take you away from learning, which is the whole objective of being in school. We're able to identify your face, which, you know, you can wear like all those things, including the hat with the brim. Even if, you know, even if you can't wear a hat with a brim, you can still wear one without covering your face, even if you outline the brim, which, I mean, whatever to me. But, you know, so, because you're able to identify them, because that's the issue. You know, from my understanding, the issue where is anything has to do with the game? We want to be able to see you and you're obviously at school, so we need you to be learning, meaning the hat can't be a distraction, which is like, you know, like anything else. So it's like, you know, covering those three points. So it's like, kind of like the R situation. Don't overthink it.
More thoughts?
And, and, you know, Richfield wants to get modern and there's a lot of, there's a lot of high schools that do allow hats. I mean, I know I'm leaving high school, so I would like to wear a hat in high school, but I've already left. If we truly would like to fulfill this objective of being modern, I feel it is quintessential to approve.
I agree.
To approve?
Yes.
To, to allow?
To allow, to allow.
To allow. Hats and headgear or just headgear?
Hats and headgear.
Hats and headgear.
Maybe we need a definition of quintessential.
I have been involved in a lot of the conversations specifically with some of your classmates around this. And one of the groups that I was working with actually sort of started this definition of headgear. It came from students and thinking about how do we distinguish between a hat and headgear? And so I really appreciate that they created the definition. I, I think one of the things that has come up is that there can also be disagreement between secondary schools and elementary schools, especially related to hats, I think, and distractions that can happen with hats, particularly in the elementary school setting. I think to your question, I would be really uncomfortable with hoodies being outlawed or being considered headgear. I think of them as a shirt that happens to have something that goes up on the head.
Man, I think...
It's not, it's not that they can't wear them. It's just they can't wear the hood up.
And, and I feel strongly about that because, you know, because you regularly think, okay, that's fine. But what happened to the, the boy in Florida, you know, trade mod? You know, it's like, it, 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 it becomes a big deal on why you can't do it. Because, you know, you start to think, okay, well, you know, it can, it can, it can become, you know, you know, you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
What I'm trying to say. So that's why, that's so if that didn't exist, then I would, you know, I think it would be appropriate to outlaw it. But there has been people to, you know, or there's been a person, a case, an incident, just one. But, you know, that's all it takes sometimes for some, you know, a lot lose their life over an ideology like this, a principle. You know, there's, there's also been, I had a cousin who she, she went to Central and there was, you know, they used to have security guards there who, you know, were very brutal. Not saying that ours, but I don't, you know, if, if Richfield were to have any type of security guard, I wouldn't want the reason for them to be brutal or for reason for a kid to get in any sort of, you know, incident, which was, which resulted in violence or a life or death situation because, to be because of a rule as simple as you couldn't wear your hood up or down. I don't think, I personally don't feel that's a life or death worthy, you know, thing, thing, thing.
Does the current policy do allow or not allow? Okay.
Dr. Clarkson.
Dr. Clarkson, please.
We've had many conversations about it. Currently, the policy does not allow it. And the practice is inconsistent and there are hoodies. The only thing that is consistently, well, that is not even consistent. Hats with brims are probably most likely not allowed in all schools. Hoodies, and I can give you some of the thought process from administrators and some staff. Staff were probably the most divided on this. And students is sometimes just because of anxiety or stress, they'll wear, the hoodie will go up. And the headgear in and of itself, especially for, well, girls and guys. But the girls in our group, especially our black females were saying, you know, sometimes you just don't have time or the resources at any given point in time to take care of your hair. So they wear headgear until they're able to manage their hair. But the hoodies are consistently inconsistent in those schools.
So in any event, though, if, if whatever was allowed or not allowed, we would, if something created disruption to the learning environment, we would, we would still have the opportunity to say on an individual basis, you can't do this.
At the very end, that is one of those statements in the last paragraph.
Right. So just to restate what I'm, what I'm trying to get as guidance from the board is headgear, yes, or headgear, no? Disruption of the learning environment is not going to be acceptable. Things that cover your face aren't going to be acceptable. Things that block it so you can't hear aren't going to be acceptable. Whether or not a student, I'm trying to get that board feeling so I can come forth with a revised policy that would ideally come back to the next meeting, headgear, yes or no? Being scarves, hoodies or generally currently is...
I don't have a problem with headgear. Okay?
Right. So quick, so a quick question. I, I think it, I think we're pretty clear, at least the policy as written is pretty clear about headgear that is worn for medical, cultural, religious observance. My percept, my feeling is, and I totally support that exception. My feeling is that given that that is, I think, a very appropriate wearing of headgear, I feel that it would become almost arbitrary to then start to define where do those board, where do those boundaries cross? So that to me argues for essentially allowing headgear with the, with the sort of limits that we've discussed in terms of the disruption of the learning environment.
So you're saying if we're going to allow it, so leave it?
Allow it. If you're going to allow it, allow it.
Don't start.
Right. Don't start, don't start splitting hairs. It feels like...
Yeah, because, and that makes sense.
Set up for conflict almost, yeah.
Because that makes me think of, in previous years, I don't think it really was more so when De'Angelo had a freshman, I think, even earlier, when schools allowed would have the whole, if you have X amount of absences, then you fail the class, you know, you're... And so you would think, okay, well, if it's a learning disruption, what does that mean? If you have a A in the class or if you have a 3.0. But a teacher feels that you, you know, you know, it becomes a gray area, it becomes vague. So I, I think that's an important thing to note as well. Because we've had, schools have had issues with that whole learning disruption and it's caused like, you know, a huge conflict. it's, um, caused like, you know, huge conflict with students and certain classes.
Right, the sensitivity around it would have to be monitored, um, if someone was applying it fairly, equitably, things like that.
Is it fair to say that if people have additional thoughts or questions as they reflect on this, to get in touch with either you or Dr. Clarkson as you are then working to finalize this and bring it back to us?
Absolutely, and then our goal will be to take that and align the language together. We showed you what they both look like, and I think we do have, have that information, so please get in contact with us if you have more thoughts, otherwise we will, we'll take that guidance and, and respond accordingly.
And I think, uh, we will have Dr. Clarkson continue to sit in that seat for our next item, which is a second read of changes to our student behavior policy and guideline, which has similarly been going through really extensive review and input. This is also before as an update and not as an action item for this evening.
Correct. This one still needs, uh, multiple more rounds of feedback. So again, this is a total rewrite of the behavior policy. Uh, begins talking about what appropriate behavior is and what effective discipline is. Talks about the policy overall, uh, talks about who is responsible for which people thinks, including the superintendent, principal, administrator, teachers, uh, non-classroom staff, parents and guardians, and then also students. Talks about how we should be communicating and making sure that, um, how we are developing our behavior components. And then it gets into the nitty gritty of some of those guidelines. Talking a little bit more, doing some restatements, but then also getting into levels and responses of what are violations of that policy. And what occurs or what are some of the options in terms of discipline if it is needed? And then also, um, lays out, um, level behavior in a chart so it can help, um, sort of that handy-dandy referral that if I am not able to follow this particular component, here are the options of, of disciplinary consequences that are available. So the goal is again to get all of this information in front of the board so the board can look at and review, um, certainly can take feedback at this time, but also, um, next meeting is July fifteenth, and we'll go through a couple more committees prior to that. Um, and it's certainly opportunity between now and the next meeting to have a lot of input over email, um, for those things that don't come in tonight.
I, I already talked to Mary, but I just would say the changes are just so positive, and it changed the whole tone of something that's discipline, but it's more like teamwork and how can we work together to help all kids rather than it feeling really punitive? And I, it's amazing that the level of the feel of it, how different it is by changing some of the words and the focus. So I think it's very impressive.
So you took, um, some models from some other districts that have the intro about responsibilities and what is the design of behavior and why are we doing some of these things prior to putting in, you know, the obvious chart of here's, here's what happens when.
Yeah, but even the here's what's hap, even that part is, like, it starts with how can we help, how can we work together?
Right.
And then moves to, you know, that's very nicely done.
I, I could not agree more. I just want to acknowledge all of the work that, I mean, like months and years in the making around this. Um, and even since the last meeting, I attended with, um, parents, family, and community members to see the changes that were discussed at that meeting reflected in this version, um, and the conversations that we have had, um, is wonderful. And I think the, uh, the one thing that we talked about at that last group meeting is how can we also include a, a positive expectation for behavior so that we can have some sort of clear statement that could be applicable across the district to say this is what we're striving for, um, that also puts all of this in context. So we've already had that conversation, um, and I know that that's something that you and the team are working on.
Well, and just so you know, on Wednesday, all buildings will be developing a one pager that will have a communication plan that goes out about what are those expectations in their building. I'm not sure we'll get it consistent across the whole district.
Yeah.
But every building will have one.
Any other comments on this?
Uh, the only question I have is. Okay, non-classroom school staff, where would a paraprofessional fall in, um, the responsibility designations?
The where, where we thought it would fall is under, um, slow it down, Steve, you go very fast. Non-classroom school staff.
Yeah.
So I, that was more all encompassing, but if, uh, there's thoughts about calling out any specific groups, paraprof, that's where we thought.
The only reason I'm asking is, um, I think it's very important that, and we're very clear on the pieces, that behaviors are always interpreted in the context of the student's developmental stage, ability to understand, et cetera. I feel fairly confident that licensed teachers have some understanding of what that means. I'm not certain, and maybe you can help me understand whether paraprofessionals would be able to apply that type of judgment.
Um, I would say that if there are special education paraprofessional, they should be able to because they work closely with their case managers and it's updated, but it would be under the direction of a licensed staff.
Yeah.
So, um, and I know that we had some parents that brought up, um, making sure that that's called out, so I can go back and reread and see if there's a place that that can be called out more directly.
Got it.
It's in, it does talk about developmentally appropriate, and I can't.
And so we're asking, are, are we asking our non-classroom school staff to implement with consistency the district behavior standards under the guidance of licensed professional, teacher, et cetera?
Building administration.
Administrator, et cetera, yeah.
Same training.
Yeah, as directed by the principal or senior administrator.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Can I add one other quick question?
Yeah.
For the readmission to instruction, and maybe this is somewhere else and maybe it needs to be somewhere else, but if a student is out of school for something other than a disciplinary action, like they're out for some kind of treatment or, you know? There are lots of different things, but I think that same type of written readmission plan would be really beneficial to any student that's been out for a certain amount of time and coming back.
So that, that's more of a note for something other than a discipline policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just don't know where it would go, but.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so to put into perspective just how much material is here between this year or this rewrite and the new one, we're on page seventy-three of the board packet. To get to the end of discipline, we end up on page one forty-one. So it's a very substantial policy. Um, Mary and her team are working very diligently on that, but there is a lot of material between old and new, um, and so that's why we're taking multiple times just reading to familiarize ourselves and to continue to review.
So the last item in the business, old business section of the agenda is a bid award change request related to what takes place at the high school, Mr. Polgi.
Yeah, thank you. So as we've talked about, there are sometimes things that happen with construction projects where you find something different than what you originally anticipated was going to be there. That's the situation we have at the high school where we were doing some mechanical work, there was some, um, areas that, um, needed some rework with some changes to that. Essentially what we're looking at doing is changing the bid authorization to include some additional work that was projected to be completed next year, um, so that we can expedite that process. So even though this is a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar change, um, really only about up to thirty thousand dollars is actual incurred, anticipated increases, um, for some potential overtime so that we can get the work done yet this summer. This is not an official change order at this point because this was set up as a time and materials bid response, so once we have everything completed, there are some savings that we're anticipating as part of this project too. So once we have all of this completed, we will be coming forth with an actual change order, um, but this is asking for your authorization since it is greater than twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, to proceed with this work.
So you are asking us to authorize the work, not to approve a bid order change? Just to make sure we have the language correct.
So it's entered in agreement that with Titan, changing the scope of the RHS, asbestos baiting project to include additional piping abatement as proposed, which was originally scheduled to be included for the work plan twenty-twenty, not to exceed a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Everybody get that?
And, and again, this is, once discovered, we have to deal with it. We have to deal with it quickly to keep the rest of the project on, moving and on schedule.
Yeah.
And we were gonna do it eventually sooner or later.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the item as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Polis.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Polis and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the authorization is granted. So moving into new business items, we will start with a resolution to continue our membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
All right, so your bits required, and we bring back to the board procedural situation that we're gonna continue being part of Minnesota State High School League, that we're delegating, their ability to oversee league's concert, athletic, and fine arts activities, um, we will support the bylaws and regulations, um, and then obviously activities director Dave Boy is overseeing this work for Richfield Public Schools. I have to have this done by, uh, August thirty-first, um, and this is what we do on a yearly basis.
And for clarity, if we choose not to do this, or if you choose not to be part of State High School League, our athletic teams will find no competition in state because all the, all the, all the programs that do affiliate with the Minnesota State High School League can't play, more or less, so.
Yes.
We really don't have a choice.
I will move that we approve the resolution, uh, is it a resolution?
It is a resolution.
I will move that we approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Polis. Any discussion? If this is a resolution, I will pull the board. Cole?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
Ashmead?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Polis?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the resolution is approved. Next is the presentation of the district's long-term facilities maintenance plan. Mr. Polgi.
Thank you. I'm rotating, see, so I'm gonna do a couple from here, then we'll move into the budget. I'm gonna go to the back. So this is a request to approve the long-term facilities maintenance plan. Uh, the district is required to do a ten-year plan and present that to the board each year. This ultimately authorizes, uh, the levying and the revenue associated with the long-term facilities maintenance plan. We are now already looking at over twelve months out for the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year as part of this plan. Um, we're projecting revenue, um, from the state and local levies of five million nine-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars, including one point, one million seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight-seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven in the general fund, um, and then an additional four million one-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand in the debt service, um, with a good chunk of that associated with our indoor air quality projects and the bonding we did for the projects over a hundred thousand dollars. So this is a part of that thirty million dollar bucket that the board had authority for as part of our larger facilities project. So you see that represented on the expenditure sheet in the twenty-twenty-one as well as ten years out. You'll see it's relatively consistent, other than those indoor air quality projects in that second category. And the one point seven million is approximately what we've been receiving the last couple years. This is a blend of the health and safety deferred maintenance and all facilities that got blended into one dollar amount. So with that, I ask for your approval.
Any questions? Seeing none, we could entertain a motion.
I will move that we approve the district to a long-term facilities maintenance plan as presented.
So. So we have a motion by Malik and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the plan is approved. Next is a similar request to provide approval, though this one has to happen via resolution, uh, for intermediate district two eighty-seven's long-term facilities maintenance plan. And the distinction is, as an intermediate, they are required to get resolutions from all of their member districts, as I understand it.
Correct. So their long-term facilities maintenance levy actually is levied against the taxpayers of Richfield. Um, there's a specific calculation that's associated with our proportional share based on, um, the services that our students are receiving as a proportion to, uh, their total services and how that relates to other school districts. Mary Allen, in her due diligence, noticed that there was a date on the actual extract of minutes in the resolution associated with that of eighteen nineteen, um, when two eighty-seven sent that to us. That is corrected. It is twenty-twenty-one, similar to our, uh, year resolution associated with that, and they will be sending through kind of their verification of their extract of minutes. So, um, we've modified this resolution with the one change, change that year in paragraph one of the, um, be resolved to twenty-twenty-one from the two thousand eighteen, eighteen school year. The rest of the information was all updated.
So, so you're asking for us to approve the resolution with that friendly amendment correctional?
Correct.
Thank you. And, uh, I don't, if, if people looked closely enough, they would see that I was not present at the district two eighty-seven meeting where this was passed by that school board, so unfortunately I cannot speak to any specific questions that people might have had. I believe I'm out of town.
And for this, our proportional share of that nine-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand is fifty-five-thousand, where'd it go?
It's six point zero-two-four percent.
Six point zero-two-four percent, correct. Fifty-five thousand one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and three cents.
I move that we accept the fact that we approve the resolution with the year corrected in paragraph one to read twenty-twenty, twenty-one.
I will second that.
So we have a motion to approve the resolution as amended by Mr. Polis and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? As this is a resolution, I will pull the board. Polis?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Ashmead?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the resolution is approved. Next is the final proposed budget for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Correct, um, and I just have a highlight of the information that is in your materials here so that, um, it's, uh, available for the video as well. We are recommending the approval, um, for nineteen twenty, and just as a note, this is a budget that needs to be approved prior to June thirtieth of this month. So if, um, there are any questions, we would hope to be able to address them tonight. And we do have the overview within both revenues, expenditures, and the impact on the fund balance, and this information has been reviewed by the fiscal planning advisory committee as well. So with this, we see that, um, we look at the revenues, um, from state, federal, um, the property taxes, local, as well as expenditures. General fund, we're looking at next year's budget of sixty-six million six-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, uh, and twenty-two dollars in revenues, and expenditures of sixty-six million four-hundred-and-twelve dollars and six and, six hundred and seven, or four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. This also then breaks it down by the program series, so you can identify where those specific categories are falling, and really these are relatively consistent, um, with some slight declines specifically tied in with our enrollment reductions in the expenditures. And then we also have in the information packet, the overview of the other funds for food service, community education, construction, debt service, trust, OPEB debt service, internal service fund, and the OPEB trust, um, associated with that. In summary, we have total revenue of all funds of eighty-nine million four-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seven dollars, which is a four-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-one dollar decrease from our revised FY nineteen budget. General fund is at sixty-six million six-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, which is a sixteen-thousand-dollar decrease from our actual revised FY nineteen budget. It does include updated changes with a two percent increase in the basic formula that was authorized by the state legislature this year, so we have updated that, um, and it also includes reductions due to the projected enrollment. We have not yet included the revenue or the expenditures associated with the additional BPK slots, um, that have been identified through the state, just because we're working to clarify exactly how much funding and how many of those positions, um, we're receiving. We did have an application for some additional positions as part of BPK, um, that we haven't received confirmation of if those were included yet or not. Because it's impacting both revenues and expenditures, um, we anticipate it will be relatively offsetting, um, for certainly the expenditures would fall within the additional revenues that would be available. Uh, when we look at expenditures, total expenditures are one hundred and forty-one million, one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. This is a twenty-seven million one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-dollar increase from FY nineteen, and that really is, um, almost all associated with the construction project, where we have a lot more construction activity going on next year than we will have going on prior to June thirtieth of this year. General fund, it's a sixty-six point four million dollar general fund, which is a hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-dollar increase from the revised FY nineteen. We see, as I said, the increase in construction activities with facility project, as well as adjustments in salaries and wages for services supplies. Really, most of that is associated with the changes in enrollment and services. One of the things that we've done is we looked at, um, where those reductions are for projected increases in certain areas, um, we've really held true on the, uh, target class size ratios and some of the increases that we implemented with, implemented with the referendum, um, to include this, uh, social emotional learning as well. Community education revenue and expenditures have a slight increase in both areas. Construction revenue is projected to be down slightly as we have addition, or reduced funding available in our accounts. We have less interest coming in. Uh, construction funds obviously increased in expenditures. Internal service fund is down slightly with reduced, uh, staffing accessing. Internal service fund is down slightly with reduced staffing accessing benefits. So we have less money going into our internal service fund because we have fewer individuals participating in health insurance associated with our reductions in staff, and all other areas are relatively consistent. This is again, an overview that's also adhered based on the program series by category and by individual departments, so an overview of that detail is also included in your projects for district admin, site admin, support services, the regular instruction programming. All of this is highlighted on the earlier slides as well. Special education, instructional support, and people support services. Net impact on fund balance, this is always what we're taking a look at. So our fund balance in the unassigned fund, the unassigned fund balance is projected to go down about $26,795. We're anticipating that much of that will be offset with the additional BPK funding and expenditures that are relatively close. The restricted accounts are where we have revenue coming in for specific purposes that can only be used for those specific purposes. So you see some increases in the long-term facilities maintenance where with our construction projects, we're not spending as much long-term facilities maintenance next year, knowing that we can hold that off with the other projects that we have going on. Capital projects levy increase for our technology referendum. This really is, there was some additional spending this year, so they're looking at building up that reserve a little bit more and coming closer to balance in that area. Slight decrease in our operating capital, and a slight decrease in our, where we had a reserve built up at the beginning of the year, so going from $1 million down to $713,000, so some spend in that area. And then basic skills, this is really associated with our compensatory dollars, and there was restricted funds that have to be used only for extended time, where for our current year, we hadn't identified exactly where those funds were going to be accounted for and stuff like that. And so as we're looking at current year, but then also next year, we've identified extended program that's eligible for that, including some transportation costs associated with our after-school programming. And so we're looking to balance that budget out next year and reduce that fund balance, knowing that it provides additional revenue into the unassigned fund balance. And then third-party billing or that medical assistance is one where we continue to look at where there are opportunities. There are very limited areas where we can spend that money. One of the things we're looking at is we have that $600,000 fund balance projected at the end of this year and increasing slightly next year. As our increases in special education costs come in, we can transfer some of those funds and pay for some of those through this third-party billing, as long as we're not doing significantly deficit spending. So down the road, we get into a situation where we spend all this and then end up in a situation, but then also making sure that we maintain equity in that area too, so we're not reducing and get out of compliance with regulations that way. We're anticipating a slight increase in our TUR, with revenues over expenditures of $36,000. And our net general fund balance impact with those restricted accounts tied back in there is a projected increase of $230,350. So overall, with those areas, a $97 million fund balance, but you can see a lot of those are in some restricted accounts as well. And then this is also other food services, as well as the other funds that are associated with that. Again, we tend to run relatively consistent. The construction fund is the biggest category where there's changes of significant overspends in that, but that's obviously where we've done some bonding, and so we have the funds to do that. And then also in that OPEB irrevocable trust, a slight increase in the expenditures coming out of that as well. So total fund balance is projected to increase for the general fund of $230,350. $220,000 are in those restricted accounts for the long-term facilities maintenance and some of those other categories, and $26,795 is in the unassigned fund balance. And then we're also looking at transfers identified to projected general funds to support restricted programming. So just to kind of go back on this one, if you take a look under the restricted accounts, you can see gifted, talented. So we generate $57,000 of revenue, but we're spending $224,000 in gifted, talented, or honors programming. And we just wanted to identify some of those areas, as well as the additional expenditures in career technical, because there are programs that are unique that we receive some specific funding for, but we are providing some programming outside of that in those areas as well. So with that, we ask that you adopt the budget prior to the end of this month, and it's the 30th. And so the 33rd, I think I missed that last time. It's the 30th, right? So adopted prior to June 31st, so it has to be adopted by the 30th.
Still works.
So with that, we just ask for your approval or any questions you have or comments.
Thank you.
I don't have any question. I appreciate the detail you provided. That was very helpful.
And the regular updates throughout the year really help when we get to this point. It makes a big difference.
Well, I will move that we approve the budget as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the budget approval is granted.
Well before the 31st.
The last item of business before us is a resolution authorizing the sale of property at 70th and Lyndale to the city of Richfield. Mr. Holgi.
Yeah, thank you. So we were approached by a representative from the city of Richfield who's been working with their roads contractor for a permanent and temporary easement associated with a portion of our Lyndale field. We worked with them. They provided an analysis of the fair market value associated with that and looked at the opportunities associated with that from Wilson Development Services. And we did work with Jay Squires from Anderson Squires and Walzburger to analyze this arrangement. It was fairly typical. They've also worked with Wilson Development Services and other similar situations. And so we are requesting authorization from the administration to sell a temporary and permanent easement rights for $9,200. It all falls outside of or on the street side of the fencing that is in that area for the permanent easement. Anything where they would need to be taking down fencing in any areas, they would replace that as needed as part of the temporary easement component of it. But we anticipate that it will have a minimal impact on that site. There are some, I don't know where it's, that really, it all sits outside of, I'm not seeing it.
Yes.
There were some of those, I thought it got attached, but I may have.
Also personal.
So it all sits within that corner and stuff like that. I can pull it up if you're looking for the detail on it. We've done the analysis. It's all been marked, and we have a statement from the city that anything falls outside of that fencing area, so it would not be impacted by any of our operations on that site. It really is to create the roundabout and to expand the rightways within that Lyndale Avenue scope in that area.
Craig, within the, there's a drawing, a slide, a slide or two later, that, is it really, is it just that shape?
Yep. So there's two different drawings. One is the permanent easement and one is the temporary easement. So I think that is the permanent easement, and then there should be a second drawing in there that is the temporary easement, and you can see that that goes up the road a little bit more.
Okay.
So the permanent easement really sits within that corner, and you can see where that is, and then some of that fencing is up on that upper side farther north of Lyndale.
And so I think I read one of them is relatively few square feet.
Yep.
In the hundreds.
I think so.
It's outside our fencing.
Correct.
Okay.
Seems to make logical sense. Is there anything that we should be thinking about that we're not?
If we said no.
No. You know, I mean, we, I worked with Wilson specifically on this back and forth. We need to go and do the second visit, but I have a statement verifying that in my perspective, anything outside of that. We did take a look at what that space is. Right now, it's classified as residential. We did take a look at if it was classified as commercial down the road. From the sale side of it, especially from the permanent easement, what would that impact be? And so we negotiated a rate that was slightly above the residential rate, but not as high as the commercial rate, just as a good compromise of working with the city and having a partnership on protecting their rights where 30 years down the road, somebody want to come and, you know, sell that whole space with that lot, then we would have some fair market value associated with that that was not, would jeopardize us in the long run. Either way, it's about a $3,000 swing between commercial and residential, and so just looking at small space. And other than requesting some extensive processes on mediation board, they really would have most opportunities to, you know, need a space for their rug.
The temporary easement, you what? Electric signboard, be affected?
The electric signboard, and it will not be affected on any. That was a very keen area. And anything that does damage any property, then they restate that to kind of work on certain situations.
Any additional questions? Then we could have a motion to approve the resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? As it is a resolution, I will pull the board. Cole?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
Ashmead?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
Malik? The chair votes aye and the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
So we are, we are at the advance planning mark. As always, it begins with room for a legislative update. Mr. Tensing, Superintendent Yonaski, anything you'd like to start with?
Just relatively quickly, I would say I believe since our last board meeting, Governor Vol signed the budgets, I believe that was in between, which for us allowed our budget to get refined significantly prior to version that board. But then also, we're in the process then of reviewing, revising, and communicating out the new pre-K offerings to come back. And so we are, we have rebuilt programming, and that should go out in communication, I believe, this week or next, and taking all the steps to make sure that we are serving all the students with all the seats that the governor thankfully returned to us. And so we're expanding our number of full-day offerings and working on communicating that out and putting students into our programs. So that's sort of the big highlight of the legislative update from my side.
Yeah, I have nothing further to add.
Seeing nothing else in the legislative arena, time for any information and/or questions from the board.
How many people do we have on the board?
Six. So there are six, there are six publicly elected board members, each of whom have a four-year term. And then we have student board representatives that have, it was a varying number.
That have no official role.
Yes.
That have no official, no, I don't mean insulting you.
You have to be on student government to be in this.
So the question about the criteria for student board members is something that we have talked about, or I have talked about with Superintendent Yonaski, and I think others have as well, because it has been a little bit inconsistent, because sometimes the student body president is one of them, sometimes it is the only one. But a couple of years ago, we had, I think, four student board members. And so, you want to speak more to the process around that?
It is tended to be students who apply, much like a graduation speech, students who apply and are interested and follow through with that process, and then meet with administration, do that work. And so we, we have had anywhere from one to four in terms of our board. Obviously, as a student government representative, you have some advantages in that process, but in terms of knowing what's going on. But we each year do that, early fall, right at the start of the school year, and move that, move that forward.
How will you know when one of your guys' term will be up?
So in terms of the elected official, every two years, three terms come up. And so this November, there will be an election for three board members, these seats. And they declare, I believe, in August is when people file for office. You file to run for office, and then they would have, they would be on the ballot in November. And so this coming November, the seats of John Ashmead, Crystal Bradkey, and Paolo Pol are up for reelection, and so they can decide to put their name in again for reelection or not. And then anybody who is a resident, I believe, over the age of
Eighteen.
Eighteen, living within Richfield.
I thought it was 21.
I think it's.
I, we will look that up and get that information. We also have a study session where we have that conversation and talk about, talk about running.
There are not too many requirements, but I know one of them is you have to have been a resident for a certain number of days, and you have to be an eligible voter yourself. So then we should also clarify if it's 18 or 21, but we can, we can try that.
Yep.
I would appreciate.
Yeah.
If a younger representative is for, very young, somewhere.
As elected school board members? Yeah.
We were 21 or 23.
That was a couple decades ago.
Young Steve.
So speaking of that July event, is that on our calendar? Because that would be our next week.
We should, we should have a study session before the July event.
We should.
Are we moving to future meeting dates?
I guess we could, we could. I do want to clarify that.
What's the question?
So the statute, the statute has six board members. Actually, the superintendent is a board member but a non-voting member.
Yeah.
Okay, by, by law. And we could have seven if we asked the voters if they wanted to add a seventh.
But we cannot make that change just this group of people.
We'd have to, right, we'd have to go to them, so.
The one item that I just wanted to share as a reminder is for board members to complete the superintendent evaluation by this Friday if you have not yet done so. That would be great.
Evaluation? Evaluation?
Yes, my performance is evaluated on a year rotation.
Or his boss.
Okay, let's move into future meeting dates. So our next scheduled meeting is on Monday, July 15th, back in the district boardroom. It will have public comment, and as we, we talked about at the last meeting, and then Christine just raised, I think that is historically the meeting prior to that filing date in August for anybody who is interested in talking more about running for the board. And I think it is historically facilitated by the board members whose seats are not up for reelection.
Right.
So let's get that scheduled and posted so we can communicate that.
We will add a study session from 6:00 to 7:00 in the boardroom related to prospective or possible running for Richfield School Board office.
Yep.
And then just as an FYI, we do not need the meeting on June 24th, the tentative meeting that was on there. And so we can take that off of calendars at this time.
But you will have that hour-long study session.
We will have an hour-long study session on July 15th from 6:00 to 7:00.
Six o'clock.
Regarding how
Regarding how to run for, for office and information in relation to that.
Yeah. And I think any number of us would be glad to talk to somebody in advance of that too, if that particular hour does not work. Or after, probably. Yes. Okay, good to know that Monday, July 24th is no longer necessary because
June 20th.
Sorry, June 24th. We were going to need to find somebody to run that meeting because both Tim and I were going to be gone. So I believe we are at the point, are there any items that board members would like to request for inclusion on an upcoming agenda? I would just make sure that we have noted something that came up in the study session earlier, which is if we can get Rachel, the Green Core member that works here in the city in July or August before she leaves, that would be great.
Okay, so Rachel, the Green Core member, and looking at partnerships in regard to green efforts and things of that nature. Okay. It is 21.
It is 21.
I pulled up the presentation.
Minimum age to run for our school board.
Oh, I did want to, I wanted to mention that next Monday is the Spartan Foundation Golf event, fundraiser they have for their various scholarships. We, we had the scholarship conference a couple of weeks ago, where I think they gave 20 or 25 scholarships to graduating seniors, 25, yeah. So it was, it was a really nice, nice event, and where you meet a lot of, you know, a lot of seniors who are really need kids. So anyway, next Monday.
And there are opportunities for non-golfers.
There are opportunities to assist and volunteer.
To volunteer.
Anyone would like to, you know, I can put you in contact with someone who will have you, something that could, to support you there.
And thanks, as always, to the Spartan Foundation for that incredible generosity they showed to our students.
I have a suggestion.
Yes, please.
Take a picture at the end.
That would be great.
Yes, and we are, we are there.
Yes.
Nobody is left in the audience, but I would have thanked all of the people who came out.
Yes.
But thank you to everybody who is still here with us at just after 10 o'clock in the evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Cole, a second by Mr. Paulus.